Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Welcome to the City Council's study session. Our first agenda item of the night is our monthly financial review. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel is here to update council on the city's financial status through June of 2017. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Well, I'd like to report one more month of being in really good standings. We have revenues that are exceeding expenditures on the general fund by about $761,000. Now, this is a little bit lower than we were last month. Last month, we were into the black of $944,000. The reason the gap closed was because we had three payroll periods in June. So, that's a fairly good-sized expense for the city, and that's what's started to close the gap. This was totally expected, and so we will see one more month that has three payroll periods in December. The year-to-date revenues are better than 2017 budget by expectations and better than the 16-year-to-date budget by $663,000. So, our revenues are still outpacing our budget at this point by a little bit. We are at -- I'm going to go back to the page here with the actual revenues on it. So, I'm looking at page three. No, I'm not. So, I'm looking at page two, and you can see that the lines, the 17-expected expenditures is red, and the dark blue line is the five-year average. And we're still a little bit right on track with that for revenues. The year-to-date expenditures are at 49.8 percent. Again, as I was saying, a little bit lower than our budget, which would be 50 percent through June. With that, we don't have a lot of excitement in the package, which is a good thing always with finances. And you will see that the fund balance is -- this is a fairly static chart because we will have an estimate with our 2018 budget, and we'll be able to update where we believe that'll come out at that point. Until we have that estimate, we'll be staying with the static chart. We do expect it to be close to 20.2 percent above where we need to be, if not a little bit more. We're, at this point, underrunning. We would expect that underrun to go into the reserve. The other page that I would like to point out is the graph on page seven. We still have Area 7, which is carrying a lot of our revenue for us, and that continues in good standing. With that, I think those are the highlights. Do we have any questions?
Questions or comments from City Council?
Good news.
Yeah, keep coming. Good to see another positive report, you know, particularly when sales and use taxes continue their upward trend, always nice to see. You know, with us having such a great record of that, it always starts to become a little bit concerning about when we'll, you know, start to head the other direction. But I will say, we've got so many new retailers coming online. I was thinking about it the other night with, you know, new tax generators online that may keep the next recession or downfall a little bit, not as bad as it was last time, hopefully. Sir?
Also, we have a lot more residents than we had a year ago. Oxford Station and Broadway, they're filling up. A lot more people buying stuff to put in the house.
And that might be making up for some of that outside-city, that Area 7, we're seeing such a big increase year over year on. Other thoughts or comments before we move on? Seeing none, thank you, Director Rinkel. Move us on to Agenda Item Two. This is our Dry Gulch floodplain discussion. Staff is looking for direction this evening. Our Public Works Engineer, Paul Weller, and Representative from FEMA and Urban Drainage are present to discuss the Dry Gulch floodplain designation. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll do a brief intro. We'll return the favor here.
Yes. Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. To my left here is Teri Feid from the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. She's a project manager with their watershed services. She's going to be talking tonight about the process that the city can expect going through with the acceptance of the floodplain by the state. And en route is our FEMA representative, Erin May. I talked to her a few minutes ago. She's a few minutes out. She will be here tonight to talk about flood insurance. Wanted to get started tonight -- Get started tonight by letting you know that we're at the end of the design process now. The floodplain has been mapped. We understand what's going on with it. All the modeling is done. The next step that we need to do is to take this to the State of Colorado and the Colorado Water Conservation Board that manages the floodplains for the state. And then, we need to decide what action the City Council needs to take, whether or not to send it, send the floodplain on to FEMA for mapping and what that would exactly mean. So, these are our staff recommendations. Urban Drainage has sent a letter to the Colorado Water Conservation Board recommending that the floodplain be adopted by the state, and the staff believes that the City Council should endorse that request. And then, we also recommend that further action be taken by the council, be it a public hearing or some other formal action, to have a discussion on whether or not this floodplain does become FEMA-regulated. Quick history here of where we've been and what we've done. The IGA with Urban Drainage was originally done in July of 2015 as a result of some local, pretty severe local flooding. We've held two public meetings to review alternatives with the public. First one was in November of 2015, where we reviewed alternatives to convey the 100-year flow and what the floodplain would look like at that point. And then, just last February, we had another public meeting that we had a pretty full house down in Hampden Hall to where we introduced residents to the actual floodplain. And I'd like to turn it over to Teri right now, and she can walk us through the procedure going forward.
Thank you, Paul. So, once we have the flood hazard area delineation study completed, as Paul indicated, it gets accepted by our Board of Directors at the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and then we send it to a request to the Colorado Water Conservation Board, who has the authority to designate floodplains in the state of Colorado, and requests that they approve and designate this new floodplain. And at that point, it becomes a regulatory floodplain for the state, and it can be used as best available information by the local governments for planning decisions relative to public safety and minimizing damage to property as well as considerations for development and redevelopment within the city of Inglewood. So, once we've received designation from the state, we take that back to the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District Board of Directors for adoption. And at that point, we send out notification of the changes to the floodplain, and we have a, we have an agreement with, or a memorandum of understanding with, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Region 8, here in the Denver metro area, to get the floodplanes, local floodplain studies put on the flood insurance rate maps and included in the flood insurance studies for the National Flood Insurance Program. And what that entails is the FEMA region, we need to kind of let them know ahead of time. We let them know ahead of time what studies we think we're going to have finishing, and they budget for that, so that at the time that the floodplain study is completed, we can start a physical map revision process with them. And what that means is that they'll take our technical data, our modeling and our mapping information, and provide that to their production and technical consultant, who then reviews our information one more time, and they produce preliminary flood insurance rate maps and preliminary products for the flood insurance study. And that would include, like, water surface profiles and floodway data tables and things like that. So, once the preliminary products have been issued, the communities have at least 30 days to review those products and provide comments on the floodplain changes and any concerns or corrections or things that they see. Sometimes, there'll be jurisdictional boundary changes or what have you that have taken place, and so those things are commented on by the community. Then, we have a consultation coordination meeting with representatives from the community that have reviewed the floodplain mapping and collect comments, go through any of the map revisions, and address concerns that the community officials might have on their revised floodplain. And at that point, FEMA will start a process to get the notification for the floodplain change along the drainage way published in the Federal Register. And it takes a while. That's kind of a wild card as far as how long that might take, because it takes a while to get it on the docket and then to get it actually through the processing so that it's published in the Federal Register. And once it's been published, then there are two local newspaper notifications that take place, and they're a week apart. And as the second publication in the newspaper starts a 90-day appeal period, a mandatory 90-day appeal period, so that if someone has, disagrees with the floodplain information, they have the right to appeal the floodplain. They submit scientific and technical data and can refute, submit through the city of Inglewood. FEMA collects all the appeals, and then between Urban Drainage and FEMA and the community and the local requester, whoever submitted the appeal, we try to get those, we get those resolved. And once all the appeals have been resolved, FEMA will issue what they call a "letter of final determination." And that's pretty much what the map is going to look like. That's after all the appeals have been resolved, and at that point, the community has six months to update their floodplain ordinance and adopt the new maps, and before those maps actually would become effective flood insurance rate maps through FEMA. So, it's a way for us to get our local floodplain studies on the FEMA maps, because we have some communities that regulate off of, their ordinance regulates off of the federal maps, the flood insurance rate maps versus our local flood hazard area delineation studies. So, on that point, I'll turn it over to Erin to talk a little bit more about flood insurance.
I'll stop here for a minute. Erin, let you catch your breath. Erin has a lot of information to present, so I think at this point, maybe if you have any questions for Teri on what she has presented, we can address those at this time.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Yates?
So, let's say we decide to go this route.
Uh-huh.
What effect does it have to the public, the people who own those homes that are in that area? And what does it bring to the city? I mean, why would we want to make this designation?
Okay. Well, the impact that it would have is that people would be in a federally designated floodplain on the flood insurance rate map. So, that would be within the 100-year floodplain. It's also called the special flood hazard area. And if they have federally-backed mortgages, at the time the map goes effective, flood insurance would be required for those properties. The other issue with it being on a federal map is that then there's fully disclosure. Anytime someone's purchasing a property, they are aware of the risk, and they also are notified, because they get that floodplain information at the, for their closing, that all has to be researched for the closing process. If it's a local floodplain only, sometimes, then the responsibility kind of falls on the community to make sure that people are aware that those floodplains exist. And while the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District does an annual mailing to people whose properties are touched by one of our adopted flood hazard area delineation studies or our local floodplain studies, it's not always disclosed that the home has a floodplain issue until somebody buys it, and then they find out that they're in that. So, it's a little bit more effort getting the real estate and lenders to be aware of what the issues are associated with a floodplain. So, it's more for someone purchasing a home that has a flood risk and trading, when you trade that property.
Okay. So, if we declare that, does it get us money to resolve this issue? Does it help us in that fashion, anyway?
Well, I guess it, you would be able to apply for federal grants, but it does not guarantee any money for that. The flood hazard area delineation studies, the local floodplain studies, are done, in this case, in conjunction with master drainage way plan, and improvements have been identified in the master drainage way plan to mitigate the flood impacts in problem areas that were identified with the flood hazard area delineation study.
So, what is a major reason that staff is recommending that we adopt this?
Can I make a comment? Yes. I think the most important thing to keep in mind is resiliency. So, if you're requiring flood insurance in your community and you do have a large-scale flood event, those people are going to be able to bounce back financially. What we see in any large-scale flood event is that less than or right around 10 percent of the properties are actually properly insured to recover from a flood. So, if you're requiring that flood insurance and you're making your policy or your citizens aware of the risk, now, number one, the most important thing is safety. You're saving lives. You're saving property. I mean, that flood hazard study that they did after the 2013 flood event, and I can't remember what the exact dollar amount of savings was from all the floodplain management and hazard mitigation efforts that have happened in Colorado as a result of these flood maps, was a significant savings in property loss. And so, by having that map be official, having people buy a policy related to it, having them build and follow the regulations as a result of it, all results in better resiliency for your community, period. So, you know, you don't have urban blight. You don't have empty homes. You know, you don't have people being foreclosed on and moving out of your community. So, that's the big reason why, that I see. And, you know, both Teri and I, and Paul, I don't know if you've been out for disaster, but if you've ever sat in a disaster center and talked to the people who don't have flood insurance, it's not a good day for them, and it ruins your day as a City Council member, as a, you know, as somebody who cares about your community. You want people to be able to bounce back, and nobody ever thinks they're going to flood. So, this is one of the few ways, if they have a federally-backed mortgage, they're required to carry flood insurance. If they pay cash for the home, they're not required. But, you know, it's one way to create that resiliency that people think they don't need when it's the number-one natural disaster worldwide for loss of life and property over any other hazard, period. And so, that's why I think it's important, you know, because it helps people rebuild.
Other questions? I think I have one. We have designated this area locally as a local floodplain, correct?
No.
No? Okay. And so, thus, we're not requiring that anybody purchase insurance in that area, then? Do we have any idea what, you know, I suppose we probably don't, of what percentage of folks in that area currently carry floodplain insurance?
No.
Yeah.
No. There's, I know there are a few.
And I understand that through this process, we'll probably get a better understanding of what the resident's, you know, actual cost of insurance and what the actual insurance impacts might be. Are there any assumptions that we could, might be able to help us kind of understand what, you know, some of the impact? I saw some of the numbers that were kind of produced in here. Is that, in your mind, applicable to our sort of situation?
I think it is. I think Erin has put together her presentation that goes through what the coverages are and what premiums are and that kind of thing, and I would like to her to present those to you.
Fair enough. What about the people who have had, you know, multiple flood events? Is there any positive or negative impact on people who are having trouble getting private insurance now due to so many flood events? I know there's not very many of those, but I know that there's a handful of folks who have had multiple flood events in the last couple of years.
I did ask that question to Erin earlier today. Her response was that FEMA does not have that information, so it would not negatively affect their purchase of flood insurance through the NFIP.
Okay, great. So, that might be another benefit of potentially moving towards a FEMA floodplain, might be getting some additional eligibility for those who've experienced multiple events. I apologize, I lost track a little bit. I think it was Councilmember Olson.
Yeah, I actually just, I think I'm asking for a point of order. I would like to get the second half, because I think many of the questions are about insurance and what the, and I've heard her present before. It was so helpful. But I do have to start with saying that I, I thought we all decided we weren't going to send this to FEMA the last time we had the conversation. So, this is, I just, for the public, I want them to know that this is a new, we're being asked to look at this again, because I've told people that, because that was, I thought, what we all came to consensus on. But I'm fine with rethinking it all again. But I would like to hear the whole, because she has got an incredible wealth of knowledge here, and if we're going to ask more questions like this, I think it'd be better to hear it all first and then ask some questions.
Fair enough. I do have a couple of councilmembers who are in the queue right now, and perhaps, if you'd like, Manager Keck, and maybe if you could give us a little bit of background on exactly what Councilmember Olson was describing as far as, because the council, you know, previously did discuss this, and I felt like kind of came to some consensus on this, and what, in your mind, brought this forward? Again, maybe you can give us a little bit of history that might be helpful for the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the thing that's brought this forward now is that the flood hazard delineation study was not fully completed the last time that this project was undertaken or examined by the council. Subsequent to that, obviously, the study has been completed by Matrix Engineering as well as the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and information has come along that might indicate that council didn't have extremely the full picture of how to examine this particular matter and to, again, take a reconsideration of its position that was brought forward by consensus to not submit this as a flood, for a "letter of map revision" with FEMA. So, that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I would like to know how this impacts. I mean, what we were looking at before was $20 million capital improvement. So, does that mean that that is totally gone? We're not even going to consider that anymore?
No, that is definitely still a consideration. That is the actual plan to remedy the floodplain issue. Once that structure is constructed, then the floodplain issue should go away.
But we're, we have to wait on Denver to do theirs first.
We have to wait on Denver, and again, it's a $20 million project. Generally, Urban Drainage pays for half of that, so it's a matter of them getting the funding, funding, and the city of Inglewood getting the funding. And as you indicated, we are kind of waiting on the city of Denver.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bernton?
It just seems kind of weird that it's up to the City Council to decide whether something is a floodplain or not. I mean, either it kind of is or it isn't. And, I mean, I know the whole plan that's coming through to Denver, and then, of course, if Denver does it, then that's going to back it up, or we are that's liable to make our situation worse if we don't keep doing the fix going down. I mean, insurance doesn't save lives, but it does help rebuild. I mean, I understand, I understand that that would at least make sure that people knew what was going on, but the City Council can't, isn't God. I mean, we don't go, you're not a floodplain. I mean, you're either a floodplain or not, so I'm a little confused at why there isn't another organization that's either making the determination that it's a floodplain or not, not this council.
It definitely is a floodplain, and we're asking that the state, it previously hasn't been mapped as a floodplain, and we're asking that the state approve and designate the additional floodplain through the city of Inglewood. Whether it becomes, whether that's a portion that gets submitted to be put on the flood insurance rate maps is the question. It can still be regulated locally for planning and development purposes by the city, but it is, there's a big safety hazard here, and I guess there's some concern on notification, whether notification would be undertaken or people would be aware of the risk and also aware of consequences, I guess, for not carrying the flood insurance and not being protected, also for, you know, not supporting the master planning improvements being constructed. But it definitely is a floodplain, and it will be reflected as such. It's just whether it's a federal floodplain.
Thank you. Turn it over to FEMA for the second half of this presentation. Thank you again for being here. Welcome.
Would like to introduce now Erin May from the National Flood Insurance Program.
Great. Thank you. So, what I'm here to talk about is really the insurance impacts and how that's going to affect your community. So, you know, if you guys just decide to, I'd like to make this clear before I dig into our, the impacts, if you do make a go-ahead with the FEMA implementation and have these maps adopted by FEMA's flood insurance rate map. So, the way that they've set it up as of now, being accepted through the Denver Urban Drainage for planning and development purposes, is there'd be no insurance impact. So, people today could still qualify for a preferred risk policy if they wanted to. If you move forward, then the, with the flood insurance rate map and having FEMA adopt this map as a federally mandated map, then the federal insurance regulations come into play. So, hopefully, that's clear to everybody. There's kind of two paths you can take. The mapping has been done, so they understand the risk now. It's how you guys decide to move forward with it for your community. So, we're going to talk a little bit about mapping. I know that you guys already talked about the mapping and zones, et cetera, and then we'll go into the various stages of insurance rates that you can have. And I'll have some rating examples up there that you guys can look at as well. So, the first thing I like to talk about is, you know, what happens? So, once FEMA's map is finalized, so in other words, rather than adopting it just through the state, this is, the flood map is adopted by FEMA, and the flood insurance rate map becomes official with FEMA, then that, if the building is listed as being in a high-risk flood zone, then if they have a federally-backed mortgage, flood insurance is required. If they've got questions, they can go out to the website. There's a lot of information there. They can always call me. I'll have my number up at the end. And the way lenders require it is based on one of three things. The amount remaining on the loan, and I don't see too many lenders do this in Colorado, but let's say somebody had a $300,000 loan, but they've only got $50,000 left on the loan. The lender can just require coverage for the $50,000 if they so choose. Not too many lenders choose to do that in Colorado. The most common value that they, that they set it at is the replacement cost value. So, let's say you've got a $150,000 home. The maximum amount of flood insurance for residential property in Colorado is $250,000. So, they could just require the $150,000 if that's what the replacement cost value on that home is.
One question. You said the maximum is $250,000?
For residential.
For residential that you can have on, for flood insurance?
Yep. Through us.
Through FEMA?
Yeah. Private insurance, you could do more. And you can always do excess coverage on top. I had a lot of homeowners in Boulder after the fires. They'd lost their home to fire, then they were running risk from fire. Then they were running risk from floods. So a lot of those folks did get excess coverage on top of our. And there is some discussion in Congress about raising that, that amount, but that, we won't know till September if that happens. I don't think they're planning on doing it this term, but we'll see what happens. And then for every other type of structure, so non-residential structures, that could go up to 500,000. So an apartment building might be 500,000, or a commercial structure, or a nursing home, something like that.
But you did say that additional policies through the private sector
Absolutely.
Make up the difference.
Yep, absolutely. A lot of good carriers that offer that. So, once the map becomes finalized with FEMA, it goes up on the FEMA MAP Service Center. It's really simple to look up a map these days, once you, once we have a digital map. So you, you go to the FEMA MAP Service Center, you type in the address, you see the location on the map, and then you click through to get to this link here. So it opens up a separate tab, and then you see the map with satellite data behind and the mapping information. So on this map, the blue area is the high-risk flood zone. That gold area is the shaded X, so that's a moderate-risk flood zone. That, that gold area does not require flood insurance, but I still recommend people in the shaded X get flood insurance because they're near a high-risk flood zone. So in our community, a high-risk flood zone is any A-zone. V-zones are for wave action. So in our, in FEMA's region, eight, the only area that's a V-zone is Salt Lake, was the only area that has wave action. So moderate-risk flood zones or to low-risk flood zones are any B, C, or X flood zones. And then D-zones are unmapped. So those tend to be in rural areas. I don't think we have any D-zones in the metro area, do we? Yeah. So, you know, a lot of ranching communities have D-zones, where we haven't just, there's not enough population to put the money into a map there. And I like to point out to people, because I think a lot of people think it'll never happen to them, but in 2013, we had record numbers of claims in low-to-moderate-risk flood zones. We were well over, nationally, our percentage, they say, is a little over 20%. We were closer to 35% to 40% in Colorado. So that's why I say, you know, even if you're in a low-to-moderate-risk flood zone, it's still, it doesn't mean no risk. And with the way our weather seems to be changing and our weather patterns, I think that risk is going to increase, unfortunately. So there's, this, the link provided here, you can actually go into the historic data per, per, by county and by community. So if you guys, as city councilmembers, want to take a look at what the historic data for claims is, you can take a peek at that. The link is over to the left-hand side on that, on that page. So one of the things that can happen as people move through the process of figuring out how their property is affected by the maps, is that they get an elevation certificate. An elevation certificate is completed by a surveyor and engineer, and they determine what the lowest floor is and the lowest adjacent grade is, what the elevation is compared to where we estimate the floodwaters would rise to. So if a lowest adjacent grade on a house is at the base flood elevation, then they can submit their elevation certificate to FEMA. It's free to do. And they can get a letter of map amendment that removes them from their requirement for flood insurance, and they can go back to that preferred risk rate, which is less than $500 a year. Unfortunately, they got to get that elevation certificate done, in most cases, in order to determine that. Unless they have a property that's kind of half-in and half-out, and it looks like the house is out, then they can submit without getting an elevation certificate done. But the big thing in, in understanding is that there's a little bit of a disconnect from floodplain management and the insurance side. For insurance purposes, we, we base our rates off the lowest floor, and that's any basement or crawl space. For this Loma, it's the lowest adjacent grade on the outside of the house. So obviously, that can be higher than the basement. Kind of weird, but that's the way it works. So, once they've got that Loma, they can go back to that preferred risk rate. I still recommend, if they're in a high-risk flood zone, and they're just out based on elevation, that they carry insurance, because, you know, those base flood elevations are estimates only. And so it can still, the water still can come higher than we anticipate on the map. So it's easy to submit for that letter of map amendment online. It's free to do in most cases. So if people have questions about this process, they can talk to Paul, they can call me, they can call Terry. And the FEMA MAP Service Center is excellent, too. It's 877-FEMA-MAP to get answers. So there's always people around that can help them. The elevation certificate is used for rating. It's used for that Loma process. And obviously, the higher your lowest floor is above that base flood elevation, the better your rates are. So people building new homes, we actually suggest that they build well above the minimum standard that, that the community has, because the higher you build, the better your rates are going to be. And some people who are in a high-risk flood zone with an elevation certificate can have a lower rate than people who are in a low-risk flood zone, because they've built that much higher than the risk. So, and, you know, I don't know what the standards are for Inglewood, what the minimum requirement is. Is it one foot, or is it one foot above the base flood? Yeah. So, again, it's a licensed surveyor or engineer that completes the elevation certificate. And then they submit that to underwriter, or they take that elevation certificate into their agent, and they'll get a quote based on that. So, you know, everybody, the first question out of people's mouth when they come and sit down and talk to me at a map meeting is, how much is this change going to cost me? And the best answer is, unfortunately, it depends. It's going to be based on a lot of different things. Does the house have a basement? Does it, is it built on a slab? Is it built on a hill? You know, what type of building is it? There are a lot of different factors that go into effect. So, and there's a lot of different ways that we can rate, and I'll show you some examples coming up. So, one of the things that I think will probably most directly affect Inglewood, because you have older homes for the most part, is that they're going to be a pre-firm home. So these homes were built before you guys had any flood insurance rate maps in effect. So there was no floodplain management standard in place. So they have the option of going through the newly-mapped rate option and keeping, kind of seeing a gentle increase every year until they either get an elevation certificate, or they go to a pre-firm rate, or they can go to a grandfathered rate. So there's a lot of options, and I know it's kind of confusing. So I'll show you the examples, and hopefully, that'll make a little bit more sense. And one of the things that was pointed out in the annual report last year from the new insurance advocate's office that was created by Congress in order to help address the more egregious problems people have seen with the NFIP, the insurance advocate comes in and helps people through that process, is that a lot of agents still aren't understanding the difference between grandfathering and newly-mapped and that preferred risk eligibility. So there's still some errors that are happening. So the existing policies went through a whole underwriting process last year, starting with policy renewal, to double-check that the best rate was being given to the policyholders with all the changes that have happened. So if people who buy a policy before you guys adopt, let's say you guys choose to adopt the FEMA map, if people buy a policy before the map is adopted, they'd get that $500 or less premium a year, and they'd qualify for the PRP. The next year, at policy renewal, they would go into the newly-mapped rating structure, which would be a 15% to 18% premium increase every year, until they either go out and get an elevation certificate and use that for rating purposes if it benefits them, or they get grandfathered, or they go to the pre-firm rates. So I'll show you some of those, those, what those rates look like in comparison. And it'll be different for each homeowner. That's what's hard. You know, you can't say, oh, this is exactly what you're going to pay, because every home is going to be different. So we'll, we'll show as people are moved in. I don't think I have any mapped-out examples, but I'll show you some of the rates. I pulled some of these slides. Wow, I cannot read that from here. Can I have your cheat sheet? Woo, that is hard to read. Oh, that's a little better. I know I need glasses, but I keep resisting it. All my friends tell me not to break down and get them. So, okay, so let's say the first year, right before the map changes, your policyholder, your citizen goes out and buys a preferred risk policy. Their premium that year would be $425. Then we can show the comparison. They don't really have the newly-mapped rate on here. That's interesting. So, so the next option, the next least expensive option would be if somebody, on this example, is, and you can see at the top, this is for 200,000 of building coverage and 80,000 of contents. So the second from the top example, the post-firm plus-one AE zone. Most of the people, and I think in Inglewood, are going to be in an AE zone, correct? So they'll have a base flood elevation established. And so they, a post-firm rate with a plus-one means they went out and they paid for that elevation certificate, which in Colorado, costs between 500 and 1,200 to have done. I'd say we're closer to the $1,000 mark than the 500. And let's say this house was a foot above that base flood elevation. So base flood was here. Their lowest floor, including any basement or crawl space, happened to be here. So they benefited with that plus-one. So they were at $1,000 with the elevation certificate. The newly-mapped rate would be 425 plus 18%. So in the second year, that newly-mapped rate would be the better deal, but I don't have that example on here, unfortunately. I just realized that. So if, let's say, the post-firm rate wasn't their best deal, that maybe they were a minus-two, which those rates would be dramatically higher than a plus-one, then their next best rate would be the standard X-zone, and that would be considered a grandfathered rate. So if their elevation certificate didn't help them, they would probably stick with that newly-mapped rate for about three to five years, because that 18% increase would still be a better deal than going to the grandfathered rate, which you can see here is, right now, as of 2017, rates is around $2,000. So it'd probably be about year five, when they'd want to switch to that grandfathered rate. Okay? And then, and this is where the real stickler would be, especially with your older homeowners who don't have a loan on their home, and they wouldn't be required to get flood insurance, so they don't get it. So then, when they go to sell their home, because they didn't have an existing policy that they rolled over to the new homeowner, which they can do, let's say they're in year three of this newly-mapped rate, and they could transfer that policy over to the new homeowner, and the new homeowner, new homeowner could continue on that newly-mapped rate until it made sense to move to either a grandfathered rate or whatever. If there's no existing policy in place, once the map is adopted, they'd go straight to that pre-firm rate of, what is that, 3,600 and change? 3,676? So that would be the scenario that, and I see it in every community that has older citizens. They don't want to buy the policy. And I'm telling you, I try to talk them into just a $10,000 policy, just to have a policy enforced, because you can increase coverage. So if the new homeowner comes in with a loan, they can increase that coverage and take advantage of the lower rate. But if the, if they don't buy within that year of the map being adopted by FEMA, they miss out on the deal. So that's kind of the stickler with people who don't have an existing loan, is they don't take advantage of that now. And they don't understand it's going to hurt them at sale time. Does that make sense to everybody? It's, I know it's a lot of information. So the other way that you can save some money is that you can not include contents. As, as they get moved down this path, they can maybe take off some of their contents coverage, especially if they have older furniture. The, the furniture's depreciated, much like a car is anyway. So if they've got 30-year-old furniture, they're not going to see a whole lot for that. Let's see. So I think what a lot of people need to understand is that if you guys, even if you guys go through your process, you get your funding, and you remove people from that, from their high-risk flood zones, it doesn't mean that they're not, that they don't have a risk. It's reduced, but it's not removed. And as I mentioned, we saw unprecedented losses in our low-to-moderate-risk flood zones back in 2013. We were, a lot of floodplain managers I spoke to in the Denver area said, we were just darn lucky that water didn't hit us. It hit further north. And it, it could be us next time, so we just don't know. So what a lot of people, if they're being removed after, if you go through your project, is that they maybe stop carrying coverage. But the good news is, they can go back to that preferred risk policy. For less than $500 a year, they've got great peace of mind. And we are seeing the losses increase in that category. And I, I think the main thing is it makes people more financially resilient, especially in an older, older citizen community. You know, a lot of people just don't have that wherewithal to recover. We saw that time and again down in Colorado Springs back in 2013. A lot of the retirees down there couldn't recover like the younger families could. They just didn't have the financial wherewithal. So let's talk about, this is another rating example. So we've got a case study. This is Austin, Texas. They've been contacted by their mortgage company, telling them that flood, flood insurance is now mandatory, which will happen within that first year, hopefully. The one thing I like to point out is that lenders are not required to, to make them carry coverage unless there are four things. One is make, increase, renew, or extend a loan. Most big banks do an annual review of their whole book of business and look for any map changes, but not all of them. So a lot of people don't find out about it in that first year, when they could take advantage of that slower slope of rate increase, because they haven't made, increased or renewed their, their loan. So they haven't made any changes to their loan that triggered the lender to check. So occasionally, you'll get people who don't find out about it until year two or three after the map revision. So in this case, they're being told by their lender that they need to carry flood insurance. The Austin's map was revised in 2014, but the swells never informed, were never informed of how it affected them until now. Their home was mapped from an X to an AE on the current map. This house was built in 1978. I'm going to ask, I'm going to make you guys answer this, see if you get it. So if this house was built in '78, is it pre-firm or post-firm? And is it now eligible for the newly-mapped procedure? These are, these are fun questions. Let's say that this community had their map adopted in, let me look at their, let me look at the example to see how they did it.
Can I ask what the acronym, acronym for firm is?
Flood Insurance Rate Map. Yep, good question. So let's say that, they don't give the date of the map here, do they? The, the first initial firm on here. So I'm going to say, let's say that this map was adopted in 1986, and the house was built in 1978. Is it pre-firm or post-firm? Good, yep. And since the map was adopted in 2014, are they eligible for that newly-mapped rate? No, nope. So their options are to go to a full-risk rating with an elevation certificate. They could go to the pre-firm rate. They don't qualify for grandfathering. They've missed out on that as well. So you have to buy that grandfather policy or go to the newly-mapped rate within that first year, within 13 months of the map adoption, not exactly a year. And they'd also have a 30-day waiting period on that policy. And you can see those rates. So for, with an elevation certificate, the full-risk rate would be 1,400 and change. I can almost see that. Pre-firm subsidized is 1,845, I think, is that right? And then the grandfather, they don't qualify for, and the newly-mapped. Now, you can see if they'd taken advantage of the newly map, what that rate would be. Disappointing that they missed out on that. And you'll have people, unfortunately, that that's what'll happen, because they won't be paying attention. Or they just don't think it, they don't have a loan, so it doesn't affect them. So I think that's about it. These are just the resources page. So these are some, this is the MAP Service Center link, the, the number to call, and the main FEMA website. And then I'll put my number up there, as well as Diana. She's the insurance specialist at FEMA, and I'm her counterpart as a contractor. I actually work for AECOM. And there's my number as well. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, room counsel?
I have a couple. So how many homes are affected totally in Inglewood or in the flood area? And do we have any idea of how those break out into high, or moderate, or low risks?
I think there were 140 structures that were actually involved, probably 150, 170 properties. I don't have the exact number on that, but it's in that ballpark. And I, between AE and the floodplain fringe...
They're, they were actually, the 141 would be what was in the 100-year floodplain.
Okay, the 141 were in the 100-year floodplain. So that's the...
That be considered moderate?
High. High risk.
And so how many total do we think we have that are in the moderate or low-risk areas?
All, all total, I, it's around 170, maybe with 100...
Okay, so the overwhelming majority are in what we're declaring a high-risk area.
Yes, yes.
Is it reasonable to, you know, designate only a portion of that map, what we designate as high-risk, or is that not advisable?
You know, normally, once you've got a flood, once you've got a flood study done, you accept the whole flood study. So you can't just take a portion of it. Doesn't really...
Fair enough.
I don't see any reason why you'd do that.
Well, I guess I was just thinking, you know, if there, if it wouldn't so, you know, so much of ours in the high-risk area, perhaps if, you know, the opposite were true, that a lot were in what we determine to be a low-risk area, that perhaps, you know, as a body, we could weigh the impact of some of the insurance costs and impacts on, you know, senior populations or whatever, and decide, hey, you know, maybe only a portion of that should be designated as FEMA. That's what I was thinking, but...
Well, there's, there's a, there's a very small area on either side of the floodway that's in the floodplain fringe or the floodway fringe. And sometimes, you can do different things in those areas within an acceptable rise of the water surface in the floodplain. But given that, you know, any rise in the floodway is going to be crucial to the, you know, 140 homes in there, then we should treat that entire floodplain as, as one body.
Thank you. Any discussion, or perhaps maybe just filling me in on what is the alternative to this? You know, we were talking about... to this? You know, we were talking about a local designation, state, you know, obviously, it wouldn't have the same level of notice to our residents, being part of a, you know, a national sort of floodplain. I get that, and, you know, we wouldn't have access to the federal grants, I think, for some of the drainage solutions. Are there any other things I'm thinking of there that, you know, maybe can help us understand what the alternative to a FEMA designation might look like?
Let me flip to the last slide here. I've got a few pros and cons, and if Terry or Erin, you can think of anything else, please weigh in on this. The pros for the FEMA floodplain designation, I think, is it identifies the risk for not only the homeowners, but, but the potential buyers. There's also the availability of the flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program, and it would provide notification to the future owners, which, you know, ties into the risk. There is the availability of federal funding for storm sewer improvements. That is a highly competitive program, so that would need, that, that would be a lot of work to get that. We would maintain the support from urban drainage and everything they could do there. And probably the bottom line is, if we turn the floodplain over to FEMA, we would maintain our current rating with the Community Rating System, or CRS. That's the, the program that FEMA uses to determine the flood insurance rates in our community. So if, if we are not going to, you know, pursue that, then there are some potential implications, negative implications there. And then some of the cons for going with the FEMA floodplain is, you know, it is an increased cost to homeowners for the insurance, and, you know, there is the ability of some owners that aren't able to pay that. Also, there's the negative public sentiment from being put into a floodplain. And generally, now the floodplain regulations in the city's municipal code are going to come into play here. So if Erin or Terry, if you have anything to add to that?
Maybe just a quick follow-up.
I think in terms of, the one, the one pro that I see to just adopting it at the state level is, you know, a preferred risk policy is still available to us. So if you guys do a good communication job, and we see an increase of policy count for those homes in particular, that we want to keep an eye out for, that we know are higher risk, then that, it's not the end of the world that you don't join. Unfortunately, what I see, just historically, is that human nature is, if FEMA doesn't require it, I'm not going to buy it. So you're not protecting the property, and you're not making your community resilient until you get the project done. So that's the big con that I see.
And if simply a local designation doesn't open them up for any additional, you know, insurance options?
And you know, the other thing that I didn't mention is that, you know, if our flood insurance isn't reasonable, reasonable for them, let's say they miss out on buying that newly mapped deal, and they got a new homeowner that has to come in and pay full price and get an elevation certificate. They can go to private insurance right now, if their lender will allow them to. And I see a lot of lenders allowing people to do that. And, you know, from what I have seen from like a Lloyds of London, it's less than $1,000 a year. It's like right around nine hundred and twenty bucks, or something like that, for a Lloyds policy. And I don't, in the Denver area, I think they, they, they cover us. There are some areas, I know in Boulder and Boulder County, that they don't write anymore, because they saw significant losses in 2013, and like Manitou Springs. But I think, for the most part, we're in good shape with the private policy. So if they don't like our policy, they can go elsewhere. And some of my states that I work in, we don't have, they don't have that option. So we're lucky to have that option here in Colorado. So that's also there.
And you guys mentioned the CRS, I think it was, you know, that might actually impact rates for the entire area. When, what's the timing on that? When might something like that happen, if we didn't move forward with a FEMA designation at this time?
The CRS for the, the city was just checked. We, we got a very positive response back for that. We're doing everything in terms of our floodplain development, our floodplain management, in their eyes. Erin, do you know how often those...
Though we didn't designate this area, there's no...
Well, since this was in the process, it really, it wasn't part of the consideration.
So next year, maybe? Is that what you're saying?
Then at the next determination, it will definitely come into play.
How often are those determinations done?
Typically, five years, I guess.
Every five years? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Russell?
On page two, there is a map of the approximate watershed boundary. How does that play into the entire, the floodplain map? Is that all designated, you would need flood insurance in that entire watershed area?
No, that's the, that's actually the study area for that basin. So water that falls within that area drains to the Dry Gulch area, or to the Harvard Gulch area, depending on where you are. And that is the source. That's what provides the amount of water that, that has to be dealt with in the floodplain. So the only structures that actually would, the only properties where flood insurance would come into play would be those that are within the hundred-year floodplain, because that's the actual regulatory floodplain for FEMA. And so it's that base floodplain or special flood hazard area, the A zones, that flood insurance mandate kicks in.
Okay. And really, the city is responsible for notifying? We would be irresponsible if we did not notify the people before the public hearing, and about going forward with this whole plan. My greatest concern is the older people in this community, they're making decisions, do I buy medication, or do I buy groceries?
Right.
And then adding an insurance bill on top of that. So, and I, is there any way to figure out the demographics of the people in the floodplain?
Certainly think of, you know, we could probably task staff with some of that. I know that might be a little bit difficult, but, you know, certainly something that, you know, we could look into. You know, I don't think we're anticipating a public hearing necessarily to start this process, but perhaps, you know, prior to the actual designation, that's something the council could consider as a public hearing on this issue. Other questions or comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you for an exhaustive report. Long, but good. I'm going to say what Ms. Barantin said at the beginning. So we're either in one, or we're not. And it sounds like we're in one. And if we are in one, we have a responsibility to our residents to let them know they're in one. Whether our residents get the insurance or not, it's not our responsibility, it's theirs. It's our responsibility to make sure that they know. I would be worried, and I would like to know, what is our coverage if we decided not to tell them? And then there's a major incident that they knew that we knew, but we didn't say, because we were worried. And I just, for me, I know we're looking for direction. I would prefer we move this forward, have, have the community involved, make sure everybody knows what's going on. We don't put our head in the sand, but we actually address this head-on. And I, and I hear Member Russell's concern as well. I have many in my community that don't make much, but what would the impact be with them if they lost their home to a flood? And we know that happens, and we, it always happens when you least expect or least prepare. So I know that part of what we're looking for tonight is direction. I would prefer that we move it forward and, and just address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantin?
I appreciate you clearing up that we don't get to decide whether it's a floodplain. It either is or it isn't. But how we deal with it, and what we require of people, and mandate through this process that they do, I mean, somebody's looking at a hundred-year possibility, and that's a lot of money. I mean, this is more, that insurance is more than the property taxes, bills that most people are paying here. That's, that's a huge amount of money to put on somebody each year. So we do have to consider that. But once it's, once we go through this process with Denver, and we go through the $20 million deal, and doesn't that mitigate it? I mean, would it ever be taken out of the floodplain then?
That would...
Would people come back and go, "You don't need it anymore"? Even though I know your slide says there's always a risk somewhere, but...
Yeah, that would, that would officially take it out of the floodplain. We would do additional mapping and submit that to FEMA. It would be officially taken out of the floodplain. Where you're still at risk is, you know, a large hailstorm could plug inlets, and now you've got local flooding again. So, you know, having that additional flood insurance, you know, may always be a, a good idea.
I can never say that an ARC won't be necessary. You're correct. It's not, that part isn't up to me, but, and so I know that it's speculation. But I think we need to kind of do this in conjunction with the plan for the $20 million project, and where we're going to do that, so, what our timeline is, where we're going, where Denver is, how we're going to fund this, so that if we can mitigate this and take them out of a floodplain with something, the plan that we have, that we have the timeline for it, the information and what we intend to do with that, and how we're going to pay for it. So do we have, I mean, we're going to have to put that all together, because we're going to have to explain that to people, because they're going to want to know, obviously, to do that as soon as possible, if we can actually take them out of the floodplain. And would that take all of that area out of the floodplain if we...
The master plan improvements are to contain the hundred-year flow in, in the master plan improvement. So it would remove them from the hundred-year floodplain.
For the hundred and forty, everybody...
Yeah, they would still, they probably would still have a risk of the, the 500-year flooding, that, you know, that, that Erin showed, which was the yellow on, on a map, right? So there would still be some residual type of stuff, but not, there would be no mandatory flood insurance requirement or anything. Everything would be out of that hundred-year floodplain for the mandatory requirement.
Okay, so we have, we'll have the availability to, the information available for people to know how we're going to take care of this, along with this?
Yes, we have.
And what the timeline is.
We have, we have a plan to fix it. We need to move forward with that as well.
Okay.
Thank you. We have heard one member weighing in on consensus to proceed. Councilmember Barantin, do you have any, do you want to weigh in on that consensus at this time, or should I come back to you?
To go through the process and have the public hearing and do that, of course.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
With them being notified.
Yes.
Right.
Those are reasonable caveats.
So I, I'm in favor of going forward with some public involvement. Again, I think when I went to the Hampden Hall event, I, I heard two different things from different groups of people, and their tolerance for risk, and their financial situation. And it's, it's difficult, because some feel like the city betrayed them to begin with by not letting people know. But if we don't do this, that will be the same thing. I mean, there wasn't an obligation at the time, because we didn't know. And of course, I, there are people in my neighborhood who are in this and have been in this since the original one, and they never knew. There was no formality for them to have found that out. Rail, railtors in the process somehow didn't uncover that. And it just seems like we got to make right on this, on the information, and make sure everyone gets it, and everyone close to it gets it, and then we work really hard on that 20 million. So I'm in favor of that. The second, I have a question, though. I remember, one of the last times we talked, that there was a next step we could do, even though Denver wasn't quite ready to go with the big 20 million thing yet, that there was a next step that was going to help. What is that, and can you remind us where that is?
Yeah, we're currently looking at plans in a couple neighborhoods of small local improvements to help with the, the minor storms, some storm sewer repairs, maybe a few upgrades where they make sense.
Mm-hmm.
And we are actively pursuing those.
And then, it's my understanding that from some of this, it would be a lot of information to, I think one of the slides talked about this, of doing things to your home to help make sure that it is a little bit more safeguarded, just physically, in the way that people do. That we know that people put up walls, that diverted, and a number of things that were really not helpful in the last time around.
Yes.
Will that, what's that process look like?
There are floodproofing steps in the floodplain development portion of the city code. And we could certainly, as a, as staff, help residents get help with those, waterproofing their doors, windows that are rated for floods, especially basement windows, improvements they can do to their property that would help the water flow around. That's, that's certainly something we could help the public with.
So that's available to them, but how would they, how would they even realize? It'd be because we've, we keep sending letters and reminding them, you're in a flood area?
I think that becomes part of the, the public information going forward, is that we put resources out for them. I think the floodsmart.gov webpage has a lot of those.
...down right now. We got hacked. And we're in between advertising contractors, so they're trying to figure out what to do with that. So that may be a while till that's backed up, but...
Okay. But there's, there's architects in town that are familiar with, with floodproofing, and certainly do our, our part to help the community make contacts with those people to, to try to mitigate their risk.
So I guess I would say, let's move forward on this. But I'd like to have our communication folks really think through information over a long period of time, to make sure that public information is constantly going out, that we don't lose sight of that. It's just sort of like the meters, you know? We kind of did this big push, and then it goes back, and nobody knows yet. There's this plan that you can actually substitute your meter out, and, or, you know, your water thing. You can be metered and pay for it in, in a small way over time. And people don't know that, because we only do it like once in a while. I would not want, I would want this to be an ongoing, here's how to mitigate flood, and, and to keep having people check it. That's more for us than, than you, than it is you two. But it seems to me like we got to be honest, because it's, yeah.
I'll just say as a caveat, that there's always going to be a percentage of your population that pays attention to nothing that you do, and then later, they'll complain. So, I mean, I have seen communities, like, for example, was it Littleton that we did the meeting with, where he literally went to the homes and put a notice on their door, and, and, you know, for a specific, there was one subdivision that was going to be affected. And nobody showed up for the meeting. I mean, he, he walked on their door, put it on their front door to make sure they got it, and they still didn't show up. So, you know, you could do as a lot of outreach, and then some people just don't, they don't want to pay attention. So that's the struggle.
Mayor, do you have something to add there?
Yeah, I guess the other thing would be that the FEMA Region Eight, and also the state floodplain coordinator are also available for support. And while floodproofing a residential structure doesn't impact the insurance implications, it could protect the home. But, but I know that there could be, you know, a workshop or public meeting or something where those, that type of information is offered. And I know that, that between FEMA and the state and urban drainage, we'd be happy to help support that.
What about financial assistance to those who are in certain income levels? Is there any plan, any program for that, for financial assistance?
You know, they talk about that every time we come up. You know, all of the federal programs get renewed every five years. So we're coming up, September's our month to get renewed, hopefully. And there's discussion about that every time, and it's kind of a wait-and-see. I, I don't know. I, I know that people talk about it, and it hasn't happened. Last time we got renewed, they talked about increasing the amount of coverage available. That didn't happen. So it just, you know, if you think that's something that's important, that's something you should be mentioning to your, your, you know, congressional counterparts. But, because that vote's coming up soon. But, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard whether that's on the docket recently, so.
Thank you. I think I got Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Yates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Yates?
Have we got our system set up yet for the billing from like the Water Department, where we may be able to identify addresses and have a note go out with the billing, printed at the bottom, or something like that?
We actually do not have that level, but we do have geographic information system, which has, through our work with Urban or Engine Flood Control and Matrix Engineering, where we've identified all the households that have been impacted by this, and we're able to pull out and create a mailing list of, for those individuals to be on a mailing list of folks who get information regarding the city's activities here.
Is, is there any plans in the future to be able to use the mailing list, the way that I, or the billing, the way I mentioned?
We, we currently are in the process right now of improving our billing. We're moving to a new program, CIS Infinity. That's a, that's our current billing company, but we're updating that bill, that software. And there's potential that we could actually connect or have inter, interaction between ARC GIS and that program. We have to look into that, though, sir.
Thank you.
Others want to weigh in. You know, I am generally supportive of moving forward with this, you know, given some caveats of being able to do some direct mailers to people. I like the idea of, you know, doing an additional notice on the bottom of a utility bill, but I want to make sure this comes sort of separately from an envelope, you know, only designated towards this issue. And then separately, I think we'd like to... And then separately, I think we'd like to see a, a public hearing prior to adoption of the map. Is that generally agreeable? Does anybody have any reason not to have a public hearing on this matter? Councilmember Olson?
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed to the public, that's what I want to see happen, but I, I would like to see more than one attempt at getting people. Like, I mean, maybe the bill can do it, I don't know, but if there's only 140, I mean, let's divvy it up amongst us and go to people's homes and also put it on their doors. I'm glad to walk through neighborhoods, that's not very many doors to put it on. I really want people to know, and the people, and of course, so we, we also notify those next door and, and a little bit further out, don't we? Because I know we got one, we're right next door to another house that is in it.
Yes, the notifications I sent out for the last public meeting included the homes that were within the floodplain, and then those that were within about a block, because they would be impacted by the construction of the box culvert.
I just want to make sure we've done multiple attempts to contact, and I don't know, I don't want to promise your Saturday afternoons to this, but I'm willing to do it.
Do you think we need more than one additional public meeting on, you know, my thought is, a mailer, you know, direct mailer, another one on the utility bill, but directing them towards another public hearing as, I'm sorry, to another public meeting as well as another public hearing prior to adoption? You know, I'm looking, thinking about the timeline, I have to think about that a little bit, you know, when are we going to have enough information to have another public hearing to make that productive? But my thought is that, would you be satisfied with that process, or do you think I need an additional step in there than what I just described?
You're asking me whether we need a neighborhood meeting on top of a public hearing?
I think we do. I guess I'm saying, I think we need at least one direct mailer, just specifically to this issue, additional communications, as we can find them through utility bills and other things, at least one more public meeting when we have a little bit more information to present to the public, and then at least one public hearing prior to adoption of the map.
I'm fine with, the more we try and talk about it, the more important it is. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I was going to echo those sentiments. I think we kind of need to over-communicate on this, and I would be more than happy to take some houses and knock on doors and talk to people. This is really important, and I want to make sure that nobody's missed in this communication opportunity. It's going to really be impacting them, so I think we should over-communicate, and mailing, fine, but a lot of people just throw their mail away and don't really take it that seriously. So I think even human-to-human contact wouldn't hurt, so I would be more than willing to do that.
Thank you.
And I think a neighborhood meeting would be helpful. Maybe if we have a good amount of information to give, so that they have enough background and know how it directly impacts them, without kind of overwhelming them with all of the information. I'm not sure where that balance is, but I think we definitely need to over-communicate.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
I just want to emphasize, when I was talking about the billing, the water bill, not necessarily for the purpose of notifying for a hearing, but to continually let people know where they sit. You know, so on their bill, it always says, you're located in a floodplain, you're located in a floodplain. So, you know, we, we have that constantly going out there, and it doesn't get forgotten as time goes on.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell, did you want to add something?
Um, yes, I'd like to, to make sure we do a, a public meeting, and I really felt like, um, your department did reach out in, in the public meetings that we had in the past, and I thought there was very good participation, and, and so I would like to see the public get some of the information that we got, so that we can have input back from the public. And I think it would be good for the entire council to attend that public meeting, to hear what people are saying as well. I mean, I'm willing to walk neighborhoods also, but I, I think if, I agree, we need to get the word out. And I'm not so sure I agree with Councilmember Yates on putting it on the water bill, because you keep putting it on and people quit paying attention. And, and so then that becomes problematic, too. And the only thing that I'm concerned about, if we have a huge older population that chooses to opt out of this flood insurance, it could come back to bite the city when all of these houses go to be sold, because then people may choose not to buy them, because they're automatically at a really high rate for the flood insurance. So I'm, there's a lot of things we need to think through, but I'm all about letting the public know and getting more input.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
If, if we put some information out there, is it possible that we could just be as succinct in, like, the pros and cons that are on here, so that we're being, letting people know exactly what's at stake here, that it will cost them more, that, you know, what the pros and cons are, and kind of a little bit of the information that you provided, on who would, who might have to do it, or at least have it available at the meeting? But I think people need to know, I mean, somebody finding out that they're in a floodplain may not mean anything to them, or a 100-year floodplain, they go, well, I'm not going to live to be 100, so I don't care. It may not, it may not impact them that they understand exactly what the consequences of the decision that we're making is going to have on everybody in this. So if we could just make sure that, you know, something simple like what you did with the pros and cons here is, is, is just full disclosure to people on what is being decided here, I'd, I'd appreciate it. Maybe we'll get some more people. Maybe they won't be happy, but at least they'll be informed, and the discussion will be better, so.
I think most of the people I've been, last week, got it. I think they understood it.
Well, that's exactly why I brought it up.
That's what you mean, you were happy.
That's, that's why I brought it up, because there were people who were saying that to other people, as if they were all of a sudden being informed of it at, at the meeting, and kind of coming to the consensus and understanding that it was going to cost them more. And there were probably, what, about 20, 30 people here, between the two couple meetings? So, but that's not 170. So, if they just can understand from the beginning what we're trying to decide, and then they can come to the meeting, maybe upset, but then maybe understand why we're considering this.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, that reminds me, ooh, doing really, making lots of noise here tonight. So, yeah, I think there were like, 50 or so at that meeting, so we had a lot of folks close to these houses as well, so I think you're right, we've got a, I mean, I'm just really worried, we can have these meetings, but if we don't get people there, they're not informed. Remind me, Aaron, did you present at that meeting, or was it your colleague?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was you, wasn't it?
Uh-huh.
Was there on the website that you directed some of us to, some kind of a, a plug-in, your information, and you get something back?
You mean like, a rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the Floodsmarts website that got hacked.
Oh.
It's down.
Shoot, because that would be really helpful, if people, before they came.
You know, like I said, there's, there's, you, you've got to talk to an agent, really, to get an accurate rate.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's helpful to know, but thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments from anyone? You know, I think as we move forward to the, the public meeting, you know, perhaps, you know, an understanding of what the alternative is, and the local and state sort of alternative, helping them understand why the staff and council recommendation is to move forward with the FEMA, I think would also be helpful, as we get them in a room together. And I'm sure you guys probably went into some of that, but just thought it might be worth mentioning. I think we've got some consensus on this. Manager Keck, do you feel like you need anything else from us? Is that fairly clear on the exhaustive level of engagement we want on this issue? Thank you, sir. Anybody else with anything on this? Thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate our guests being here this evening as well. I'd like to, like to move us on to our third agenda item of the evening. This is our Broadway improvement final design. Our Public Works engineer, Par Weller, is here to give an update on the Broadway improvements.
We were here about June 19th, our last presentation, where we talked about some of the improvements that were going on, on Broadway. Wanted to take the opportunity tonight to update you on where we're going from here. Mid-block pro, mid-block crossing improvements, we are proceeding with these. We have given a plan to the contractor to get pricing. The contractor is our concrete utility contractor, so he will be utilizing a lot of the prices that were done per bid. We are going with the rectangular rapid flashing beacons to provide the most notification that we can. They will be put per the traffic code. The, the extra distance that we need from the original design of the concrete bumpouts to where the shark's teeth, the, the driver notification needs to occur, is being handled by pavement markings and signage, and we have determined that this additional length is not taking any more parking from the businesses. We are also looking at things to try to reduce the, the time involved in this project, and the dollars that are cost. It looks like we may be able to eliminate some of the inlets and redo the curb and gutter instead. That would save us digging three big holes in the ground, which are going to have a cost impact, a time impact, and, and just a general impact on the, on the street, because we'd have to take out some sidewalk with that. The streetscape, we've gotten some preliminary plans from our consultant now, showing the location of the outlets and the pedestrian light positions. We have instructed him to go ahead and work on the final plans and create the construction documents and the bid package. They're also working on a photometric plan for the Hess America lights that you see here. A photometric plan is, is a fancy way of saying how the light is going to spread. It'll give us various intensities, so that we can be sure that we're not shining light in somebody's window, and not washing out the front of a building. Again, these lights are downcast, and that's good for the dark sky movement, and to minimize the glare on the adjacent buildings and their signage. Our schedule on this is the electric infrastructure, we hope to get out to bid in the mid-October with the contract coming to you mid-September. And then, being that late, we'll need to work that schedule around the October block party and the holiday lighting, make sure both of those come off without a hitch. Street furniture, we're going to go with the federal green, so the, the after photo here is a, is a little bit different than what the actual was, but it's, it's hard to replicate that on, on, on PowerPoint and the electronic. Banners, we have changed up a little bit. We've added the artistic text to the one banner. These are pretty much ready to go and can be ordered and installed at any time. They're, we can order, they, they can be changed out seasonally, but these are the patterns that we are suggesting we start out with.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
I use friendly cars from the past, and not people, for the sign, theme.
Eric, can you answer that?
Why, why is, why is the friendly one, does, why does it not have people in it as icons, rather than cars from way back when?
I can answer that. Doug Cohn would not stand still long enough for us to, no. Actually, this, this, this depiction was done and put together by a graphic artist. It's not to say that this couldn't be done, it couldn't have people in it, but this particular, these three were what he has proposed for us.
It just doesn't resonate with me as friendly. It looks very closed, and like, you drive your car and you're in it, and you're by yourself, and, and I, I should have said something the last time, or maybe I never, I don't know.
Changed slightly.
Yeah, it just doesn't, that doesn't feel friendly to me. The other two make total sense, rest, but that one just doesn't.
We can look into that.
Yeah.
Well, I keep telling my mother, who has MS, that if she moves from Chicago to here, and she goes, I can't move to Inglewood, it's too hilly. And I told her, there's no hills in Inglewood, and now you've got mountains in Inglewood. So, I, I think that maybe it's, maybe some artistic license there, but, yeah, if, if we could get things, you know, to make sure that they're a little bit more actual Inglewood, because my mother sees that, she's going to think I'm trying to move her to the mountains.
Yeah, we'd only be using theme one.
Huh?
We'd only use theme one.
Yeah, I think the staff recommendation is theme one.
Oh, one or the other, not all?
I think they showed us theme two as an alternative, if the council had an allergic reaction to theme one. But if we can, you know, maybe hold some of these thoughts on the theme of the banners, we can come back around to this issue and try to get some consensus.
I don't want to lie to my mother.
And then the last, the last comment was, to review with you some of the public involvement that we have had through this process, we got a, a list of all the business owners down there, they've been notified twice so far. The first one was made about June 27th, and it contained an introduction, gave us, gave them some contact information at the city, and gave them an update on the mid-blocks, such as the, the rapid flashing beacons were being installed, the red carpet crosswalk was being installed. On July 10th, we sent out another email to the businesses that contained all the light fixtures, and we asked for their input. We had two business owners respond, and both of them had asked for the more traditional style. But that's all the participation we got there. We do intend to go forward with this, email out the banners in a similar fashion to the, to the lights, and then also to give them an update on the mid-block construction schedule and what they can expect then.
Thank you.
That's all I had. I think Dave has something to add.
Thank you.
I want to add one thing. Of all the elements that we talked about putting in, would be the mid-block crossing with the red carpet, we talked about painting of the street furniture, the pedestrian lighting, and one of the elements we haven't talked about, though, is the wayfinding. And we do, we would like to explore that a little bit more before we propose anything. We would see it on the west side of the street.
Thank you. Open it up for questions or comments. Councilmember Olson?
So, one is, what would that entail, the wayfinding? And you need to, you want to get more input on that one, or?
I, I wouldn't mind input on it, but I really don't know at this point.
Okay.
You know, that can come a little bit later, as we identify, work with the businesses, and work with community development on what's appropriate.
Okay.
Definitely would like any thoughts you have on it.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would love for have the businesses' input. So, so you sent these things out to them, and then I'd written down here, what's the impact or the feedback? You've gotten only two businesses' impact, and they both agreed on the same kind of thing. Was it an invitation to respond in some survey form? Is that what it was? And they, and they still didn't?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, I'd love to have, well, first of all, thank you for trying, and for, I, I like the, the changes that have been made here. I think there are some good adjustments from the feedback from before, but I don't know how do we get, this is a lot of money being put into two blocks, and not having them care about it, or being, you know, more vocal really upsets me. I would love, I mean, I'm glad to go walk around there, too. It's not my district, but I'm glad to go down there, if you, if you want a bunch of us to go, hey, what else do you want to give input on?
We could. I want to, we're kind of ready to go forward. If we spend a lot more time, we're not going to get it done this year. And most of the things can change. Banners, we can always change banners, they're not that expensive. We're just painting the existing furniture, you know, down the line, and it'll need painting again, that could change. Really, the, the major thing is the underground work, and then the light standards that we're proposing. And we really like these, because they won't wash out people's buildings, they give the opportunity for some color and different effects, so it looks different than other blocks. But I'm all for input, too, but there's a point where we're not going to get it done.
You're right. Some of what you're doing is just plain needs to get done, and you can't really decide on, you know, electrical infrastructure, nobody's going to give you more input on that and the aesthetics, right? So, all right, good point.
Councilmember Berentine?
They do care, and they've been given input for the whole two years that I've been here. When I went, when I went, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, to some extent, I think you're right.
Okay. So, when I went down this last week and talked to them, they're getting frustrated, they just want to see, they want to see, let's move forward. They want to stop picking colors and little themed things, they want to move forward. And so, I, I think that they're just kind of ready. The biggest complaint was about the wayfinding signs, even when we did the budget meeting down at the school, they, the people said, we don't want to spend money, and that is a block. If you don't know where you're in, you look around a block, you need a sign like that. I went down and talked to some people down in Littleton where they have those, and it is one of the biggest complaints they have. One, they're kind of stupid looking, they don't fit in with the theme of that historic area down there, but people don't really pay attention to them either, even though those are more for, I think they go about six or eight blocks down there, and they, it's interfering with the sidewalk, it's just one more piece of clutter down there, and people just didn't like them. But... But when we did that budget meeting, people go, "Why in the world would you even consider putting something down there that just attracts, again, for a block, to tell people on a block what a business is there? And it's too small, really, to be considerate signage for when people are driving. I mean, it really isn't something you're trying to encourage drivers to read. So, if it's for pedestrians, I don't, I don't really think that was the biggest pushback that we had at that meeting. And I saw the ones that were kind of, I think they look a little bit better than what Littleton had down there, some of the other ones I've seen, but I just don't think that they're useful. We can spend the $20,000 another way. And like I said, for the entire time that we've been talking about this, those businesses have been the catalyst for doing this entire project. Their push, their communication, their creativity, their input has been the reason we're doing this, and they're done. They want us to do something and get it done. So, I don't think that it's not that they care, and they've been reached out to, and they have, actually, they've reached out to us, and they've been very vocal to us about the problems and concerns that they've had. And now, I think that they just want to get it done and move forward. They have businesses to run.
Yeah. Thank you. I think Manager Keck wanted to get in, and then I'll go to Councilmember Yates.
Go ahead. Eric.
Thank you. I think the comments that Councilmember Berentine has brought up are salient, and we just want to make sure tonight that we have clear direction from council so that we know we can move forward. I think that Public Works has been, you know, kind of holding the reins tightly here, but we obviously want to get some very clear direction. And wayfinding signage was included in this project from the beginning because we thought it might help with place making. And I don't disagree. I think the million dollars that Littleton spent on their wayfinding signage is not very, it's not very attractive and doesn't really fit, but we want to avoid that. But we want to listen to what you have to say tonight and take that to heart and then move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
Overall, I would say, yes, let's go ahead and move forward. When it comes to the wayfinding signs, there seems to be, you know, people that are for and against. The cost of the sign versus the cost of the electrical where that sign's going to go, how does that work out? Is it like 60% sign, 40% electrical, or, you know? Because the reason I'm asking is if it's inexpensive to get the electrical into position, and maybe we do not do the wayfinding sign this year until we find the solution that works, but the main infrastructures are ready for it. So.
Yes.
How is the time to do that while we're running the electrical? I should just pick the position on the west side of the street, and that's where we'll go in the future. Three.
Will you know where that's going to go so you could tell the businesses? Because I, one of the complaints of that is the amount of space it's using up, us using ever-increasing amounts of space on the sidewalk. And there may be some restaurant that wants to come in, people that want to do things out on their sidewalk. We've got, you know, art out there and benches and little bicycle things and the trash cans.
I think that's a perfect opportunity to reach out to them again, show them some samples of what the wayfinding could be, and show them locations where it could be, what it could do for them, and let them give their input on that. They haven't specifically said anything about it other than they do, some of them do feel that it's not cost-effective.
And the concern is, is that we have made it clear that we want to make sure that the public right of way is accessible, and we limit them to putting, them putting anything out onto the sidewalk or that public right of way. And they're asking, "Why do we keep cluttering it up with more stuff? If ADA accessibility and that public right of way is very important, then why are we limiting them to putting out a sandwich board sign or to them pushing out a patio or doing other things that might make that more useful for their business?" And so, I think we have to balance that because there's some places where some artwork has been put that would eliminate a business from being able to put a patio in front of a restaurant. And so, those are being considered when people go to lease businesses. So, I want to be cautious of that, that we're not the ones cluttering up the street and we tell them not to. So, just to have that discussion.
We'll be very conscious of that. And since we don't know where to go, I think we'll talk to our electrical engineer about how we could tap into this later in not even knowing where it's going to go. Surely, we can make some provisions to have enough power, so maybe we only have to remove one stone of concrete to get to it. So, that'll be our goal.
Thank you.
And of course, we won't want to clutter it up and make sure that ADA access is always maintained. Some of that artwork that was put in years ago, we've lost the ability for a wheelchair to even go down the sidewalk. That won't happen again.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates, did you have any further comments there? Thank you. Before I turn it over to Councilmember Rulson, I've got a couple of questions and comments. The streetscape color, I assume, you know, obviously, in my mind, the trash can, the bench, the newsstand kind of go together, and, you know, a lot of times, they're kind of located together. I assume all of those will be repainted to this federal green. Does this also include the bike racks, which are kind of a lighter green color?
We had not included the bike racks in our.
Okay, so those would not be repainted as part of this project?
Correct.
Great. You know, I kind of like some combination of the, you know, two different kind of greens that we have in our brand theme, or, I'm sorry, our, yeah, our brand theme. Is the federal green, in fact, our brand theme? Okay. And I feel like we need to consider which shade of green we're going with here, and if the goal is to re-shade all of the federal green in town to our new green with our new brand theme, then maybe we should start here, but, or perhaps we should just modify our brand theme to include federal green. But I just want to be conscious of that as we move forward. I'm open to either. I like the idea of mixing the darker green with the lighter green on the different streetscape because I feel like that's matching a lot of our brand theme moving forward. You know, as far as the, you know, I'm supportive of the Hess lights. I do have a question regarding that. Does that, all the different capability of different lights and downlighting and all those kind of things, do those need to be specified at order or are those things that can be modified later?
I would think they could be modified to some extent later, but it may take reconstruction, at least part of the poll.
I mean, right now, are we anticipating the source of the light simply being at the top of the light? Or are we also going to move forward with that kind of more pedestrian lighting of the downlighting at, you know, I don't know, three or four feet or whatever that might be?
Primarily, primarily will be the downlighting from the top, and then we'll want to look at these different areas where we want to add the accent lighting. You know, two things, two places I could think of immediately would be at the Paseo where we could light that, maybe the Paseo and the end of the blocks to where we could work in some different kind of lighting. The rest of it, maybe it didn't, wouldn't need the accent lighting.
What about different colors and things? Are we going to have that capability, or is that something we'd be looking at adding on later?
It would have that capability, yes.
Okay. I assume that, you know, all of this is, leads to a lot greater energy efficiency. These are LEDs, I assume, that are much more efficient, both from a electrical consumption as well as light pollution kind of, that's what you were kind of getting at about sort of the directionality. Is that correct?
They are directional light. I don't believe they're LED. I believe they are a different light type.
Did we look into any solar options as far as, you know, putting a panel on top of these? Do?
That is not included in that light design, no.
Did we look at any energy efficient, more, you know, do we look at the lighting from an energy efficient standpoint as well as a cost-effective standpoint? Can anybody answer that or give me some feedback on that?
We didn't evaluate it that way. Our electrical engineer, we let him propose the type of lighting. We just gave him general direction. Now, all of this is going to be a lot more energy efficient than the lighting we have out there. I can't give you a number, but they'll be much more efficient. Our energy bills right now to run all the pedestrian lights are in the neighborhood of $20,000 a year, not just for 3,400 block, but this goes around Cherokee and all of the globe lights you see. So, as we replace those, that'll go way down.
Thank you. I'm guessing Hess might have some marketing material on energy efficiency, perhaps could be disseminated to council just for food for thought. You know, and then I just wanted to mention, I do like the first theme. I agree with Councilmember Olson's comment about the friendly doesn't quite fit quite as well as the historic and artistic themes. You know, perhaps the explorer from theme two might be more suited towards that auto, you know, that auto banner. But, you know, I really like the themes of historic and artistic, that, you know, I think those are two things that we really want to push out as general themes as far as differentiators for the city. I appreciated the work done on the different colors, you know, making it match more towards our color palette of our general brand theme. I think makes a ton of sense here, and so, again, I'm generally satisfied with theme number one. And I assume basically those three would be repeated on both sides of the block. Is that basically what it is? I believe there's six banner placements. Does that sound right? Or, I can't remember the total number of banner placements, but it's not a huge number.
I believe five or six.
Yeah, okay. And so, basically, those three would be repeated on both sides of the street. Is that correct? Yep. Okay, great. And then, finally, I wanted to end with some comments on wayfinding and the art installation. You know, I do think wayfinding is a big part of this project. You know, not only does it, you know, effectively, you know, provide that wayfinding in my mind for both pedestrian and vehicles, it's also a major branding opportunity for us. You know, unfortunately, I think right now, the 3,400 block, our historic downtown, really looks like every other block of South Broadway corridor candidly, and I feel like a big part of what we're doing here is differentiating Inglewood for passersby. And so, I feel like, you know, doing some sort of wayfinding monument signage that would be, you know, three to eight feet kind of range, somewhere in that range that lit up and would provide that connectivity, you know? The long-term goal, I think, of the city is the connectivity of the South Broadway corridor with the city center site. This new development, I think, was conscious of that. The Urban Renewal Authority, when selecting contractors, was super cognizant of that. In fact, I think that's why Mendici really won this project is because they understood the importance of the connectivity of the South Broadway corridor with the amenities here, the light rail, the city center. And so, I feel like that's a major opportunity. I do think we have plenty of space, you know, having walked the block on the east side corner where that bulb out is on the east, northeast corner, the 3,400 block outside of the lighting store. I think there's plenty of opportunity there if we push the existing streetscape a little bit to the south. There'd be plenty of sign, place for that monument signage. The great thing about that is that the Inglewood theme on the top could also apply to Inglewood Parkway, which of course begins at Broadway there and heads east, of course, to this site. You know, I also see some opportunity, not only, you know, for the vehicular traffic, for free parking as well as city center amenities and light rail amenities, but also for pedestrians, you know, and perhaps looking at a maximum of mapping local businesses. But, you know, I could, you know, see us stopping short of that and simply providing a more general wayfinding. I think this is way more effective than our general wayfinding signage. I mean, keep in mind, you know, genuinely talk wayfinding, we're talking vehicular signage, directing people. We have $100,000 budget for this. This is a major traffic consideration, and I feel like this kills two birds with one stone, not only, you know, helping with wayfinding, but also helping with our branding and differentiation of our historic downtown. Finally, I just wanted to mention that last week I did speak to the South Metro Realtors Association, and they suggested they were very interested in supporting local placemaking and downtown projects, and they may have some grant money for us. I'm going to meet with them, with Manager Keck. Might not be a huge grant, but I think anything would be helpful, and I think they recognize, I think, from their perspective, the value of these type of projects of differentiating your, the heart of your city and creating more of an identity that changes perceptions for, of your place as a place to live and do business. I'm sorry, I was a little bit long-winded there. Councilmember Rulson.
I think Councilmember Martinez is.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Appreciate that. I'm actually fine to move forward, holding off on the wayfinding signs. My only concern is that there's going to be a lot of new things on the block for drivers to maybe be distracted by, so, you know, the banners and the flashing lights and signs, I think it might just be a little much. So, I would be fine moving forward without the wayfinding signs for now. And KEB had a question about recycling receptacles on the block. I don't know if we have any information as far as if that's an option or not, but I told them I would ask when we talk about this.
Any update? We did send out an email saying we're working with some contractors to see if recycling is an option. I don't know if we've advanced that conversation.
Yeah, it is. And actually, we do have a recycling program here at the city. Again, one of the concerns is that wherein we have those receptacles today, the public does not discern between the two or refuses to, and a lot of instances, then, our folks who do handle the waste end up putting what comes out of that receptacle container into the garbage waste stream as well. However, we do have the ability to provide a recycling, you know, recycling container adjacent to the normal waste receptacle, so that is something that we could do. Just need to make that, make that decision if we're going to go ahead and move in that direction.
Perhaps we can get some additional council comments on that idea.
Yeah, I guess I would just like to ask, how much extra work would it be for the staff or whoever we, you know, task with disposing of the recyclables along with the trash? I mean, kind of what does that look like?
Yeah, and matter of fact, this is something we've looked at very hard because we're floored by how much time that was spent picking up garbage. Actually, it works out to be about four full-time employees a year, and in some instances, I'd have to go back and look at the report, but we're actually looking at a company that has a kind of a mechanical system for waste. Actually, it's a company called Big Belly, and they have a, it's a solar trash can, basically, and it compacts itself, and it actually sends a Wi-Fi message when it needs to be picked up. Right now, we're having our employees drive down the street and essentially just pick up garbage and empty cans that aren't completely full, and that takes up, obviously, a lot of staff time. But we did a, we worked with them and did an analysis of how much time that's spent, and it's staggering how much time that we do spend on waste pickup, but I can pull that for you, but that doesn't discern between waste and obviously recycling. But there is a significant impact on our staffing levels, and that obviously is what drives our budget as well for how much time that we spend on that particular service that we provide to the public.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Martinez?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. I didn't have the order of who was in next. I think I got Councilmember Olson, but if you've got a better read of that.
I don't know. I never saw it. I know that Amy had her it's up for a while, but I, now I'm, I think I'm confused by your comment about, maybe can I, can you say it again about it's not worth it because there's too much trash being put in with the recyclables, or is it, we have the capability of doing it, but what's, what's the issue for you?
We have the capability of doing recycling. I don't want to obfuscate or confuse the council with my comments. We certainly could implement recycling. What I was saying is that in the instances where we have recycling today, our recreation centers, both centers, people are using the recycling canisters for trash as well. And that, basically, what I was trying to say is it doesn't help us take garbage out of the waste stream for recycling if that's the case.
So, I guess my concern would be that our, that our educational process goes along with it, and maybe KEB can even help with it, but if people are not, most, most cities are now using those, and in workplaces, too. It, maybe it's just, I don't know, I can't remember what they look like, and I've been in the rec center, I don't remember seeing recycling, but are they just traditional gray, say, recycling, and they'd say what products? Yeah, well, it might be that we can't do it for a while here because we're just not ready to store it like that, but that's kind of too bad. I wanted to say on the, on the sign thing, I really do like this first theme, and I like the three words, historic, friendly, artistic. I really like those, so I just would like to see that friendly one swapped out with people rather than cars looking like they're going to compete right now. The electrical positioning, I thought was a brilliant idea, Councilmember Yates, to position ourselves for it, so I'm not, I'm not concerned about doing it right away. It's only, it's, you know, it's not as much, but I certainly would like us to be in position to do it in the future once we figure out what's best. And it may be, as Councilmember Martinez mentioned, there's a lot going on. It might be a while before we figure out what makes sense, what doesn't dizzy the driver. Of course, we want them all to stop and buy Inglewood, but point of clarity on the sidewalk signs that Councilmember Berentine mentioned, we changed our codes on that. Are we still hearing from businesses that they feel like we're regulating the sidewalk signs too much, or do we need to make any adjustments there? Because I haven't heard that from anyone, but is that maybe a narrative from the past that just isn't being broken, maybe?
No.
Are you hearing that still?
We're still hearing that, and actually, code enforcement has had to take action in some limited instances wherein, I don't want to name any business now, but basically the 4,300 block of Broadway, we had a business that actually had multiple sandwich boards on the sidewalk, and I think Councilmember Berentine hit the nail on the head, and that And that is, it was impeding people who were in a wheelchair or needed to get around or they had the mannequin with the electronic sign. And it was taking up too much real estate and preventing people from utilizing the sidewalk for its purpose.
Well, that's good to know. I would certainly want us to make sure we're doing everything we can for that. I've seen some of our citizens who are sight impaired, you know, going down the street with their, with their stick and not, and missing something that then they run into because of the precarious nature in which they get placed, so.
We do allow them, you know, I mean, certainly as long as, you know, they leave that four feet of right-of-way for ADA access.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know. So the meeting that we had in the spring with the businesses downtown, was that the spring? Yeah, yeah, doesn't seem, that's not very long ago, just a few months ago. I heard very clearly there, and several people talked to me afterwards, about wanting to be giving input to the city and feeling like the only people talking to them sometimes were us. So that's why I was pushing so hard to make sure that we keep giving them information. If they've gotten it and you think they've read it and they're fine to go ahead, they're done giving their input, that's great. But that was, that was what I heard is that, yes, you all are listening, but the city hasn't told us what things they're thinking about. And so I'd like more input into that. So it sounds like perhaps no response means everything's okay. I would hope that's the case. And finally, I'm really in favor of this. I'd love to see us move forward on it. I think let's go for it. I'm ready.
Thank you.
It's exciting to see. I mean, I think the down, that area with the former bid, this is always what they wanted. This is, this fits with everything that came up over and over and we just couldn't get it done. So it's exciting, I'd like to see us move on to the south part of Broadway.
Thank you. I think it's councilmember Yates and then Mayor Proton.
Okay. Joe brought up some interesting ideas when it comes to the wayfinding sign, the location of it. I, I'm not necessarily sold that it should be on the west side, you know, and it, I'd like to have it so that both north and southbound can see it, so we get the best bang for the buck. He did bring up some good points. It could be a way of pointing out light rail, city hall, in various other parts of the city, sending people in the right directions. So I'd say the location of where we're going to put that wayfinding sign in the future is really the most crucial question right now. Exactly what it looks like and what's on it is secondary to that. There's also a comment about the streetlights being solar. And I know that we're always pushing towards a green, you know, a green stance or however you want to say it. This is a comment, and you tell me if I'm incorrect on this. But on streetlights, you don't necessarily want to do solar because of their consumption of energy. You can't make enough electricity to run the light for as long as it runs. Plus, in order to get any benefits, you know, if it's making energy during the day, it either has to go into a battery or you have to go through an inverter and then it goes into the power system. Then you have a meter and then, then again, it becomes not cost-effective. The solar, the solar lights work well on like the crosswalk lights and stuff like that where they're only on for a short time period and their consumption is not real high. So, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, I'm excited to move this forward as well. I'm going to agree with Ms. Martinez that we probably want to, others have said, let's get this thing done first and let's add the next phase. And I think we need to complete one part before we jump into that. I'm worried about adding too much at one time, but wayfinding, it would definitely be something I think we need to plan out for the future.
Thank you, councilmember Berentine.
One of the things that came up, that I want to make sure that we're still looking at is the speed limit, lowering it down to 25. I wish there was another name besides Federal Green. Sounds like a penitentiary or something. I would just call it Inglewood Green after we'd said what that looks like. I don't know, but that's, that's just, I can go to Home Depot and buy Federal Green, that's weird. And then the power washing. And now that we've got more traffic going down there, that we make some kind of commitment from the businesses. I would, I think that it's already included in anything where we give somebody a patio permit or obviously the Paseo where we're leasing any kind of property, that that's done on a regular basis. Along with, from what I've talked to some people who've been redoing their downtowns at that urban renewal meeting and then at CML, they're really, have an aggressive schedule like for the street cleaning and that for these areas that they're trying to do like for downtown redevelopments. So that they're maintaining that look and that it's nice and clean. And that includes the businesses doing that street power washing. I know we had some this spring that happened, I don't know whether the businesses knew or not, but some of them got damaged because water went into their buildings. But I would think that that's something the businesses should, should be doing, especially if it's these patios. Because some of them don't look good.
I agree. And usually this type of thing is done by a business improvement district or a CAM, in the case of City Center. The city did power wash all those sidewalks and yes, we did get water in a couple of buildings. It won't happen again, we got a way to fix that. But we spent about $5,000 power washing one block, one time. That's, it's a lot of effort. Of course, it was extra dirty because it hadn't been done forever. Getting all the gum up was our, was our goal. But we didn't have a budget to continually do this. It was a one-time expenditure.
If we're, like I said, if we're putting this kind of investment, and I'd like to see some kind of agreement that we can understand what that maintenance is for the sidewalks, just like snow shoveling or anything else that, that's piece of it. But it should be part of the contract for anybody who's got the patio because they are being given access to the public right-of-way for a purpose that it was a busier, dirtier potential purpose at a very inexpensive cost. And especially for the Paseo that we make sure that that's part of the agreement. Although I actually believe that they maintain the west side of the Paseo really, really well. I mean, Bob's has done a beautiful job on that and they keep it very clean. But not everybody's doing that with the patios. And maybe some of the ones that have these, the garage door kind of onto the, onto the sidewalk so that if they're going to access that, have the ability to access that space in that way, that they at least come to some agreement. Whether we are able to come to some agreement with all the businesses down there on how they're going to keep their sidewalks clean, but we shouldn't have any trouble with the people that already are using the space.
Yeah, those temporary occupancy, the right-of-way permits that we issue for those patios and so forth, we will make sure in the future at least that we incorporate that they have to keep that clean. It may say that in our agreements already.
How often do they come up?
Do you know, Paul?
Very rarely have we had them. We've had one recently and we have an application in.
We've had one within the last three months, actually two within the last three months. One was for a restaurant, the other one was for the gun store.
And then they make a payment, how often do they have to pay that?
Once a year.
Once a year.
It's a $50 fee once a year.
And for, and for that, I'd like to just make sure that we've, we're, as the ones we have and move them forward, that we keep them clean. I think if everybody's required, then we'll have less pushback. We'll see how that looks, I guess.
Thank you, council. I think we have consensus to move this project forward with the exception of the wayfinding coming back. You know, can I get an idea of where we're at on the public art piece as well? What the timeline might be for recommendation on that? Does anybody know where that is? I know we were trying to work with, I believe, cultural arts for a recommendation on placement. We'll get that calendared as well and we'll be able to look at the placement of that as a body as well at some later date. Any final comments or questions on this issue before we move on? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. How are we doing on bio? Do we need five minutes now? Take five-minute recess, thank you.
Okay, you can look it up. And then this, because this is just black and white anyway.
It's not exactly like realistic, I suppose.
So they're supposed to focus down.
I guess they can change it because look, it goes like, I think, you know, they can see how this one goes down and up. I think they have...
Adjustable.
Yeah, I think they're adjustable.
Yeah, so they're just a hole.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. With, you know, just the light.
And then they can color things.
I think the banners are going to go to the XL. Which are the, the XL energy ones. These, this is pedestrian lighting.
That's probably what I was saying. They have like, had LED readouts. You can use those readouts for the wayfinding.
Okay.
Now they just have the flashlight on.
I think they're hanging on the, on the XL.
I didn't realize there's two different kind of holes.
Okay.
Well, I don't think anybody is saying no.
Yeah.
In fact, it's just, the other thing is now.
Hey, Rick.
How you doing, man?
How are you, sir?
You been? I don't see you anymore.
It's been, it's been, I've just been running.
Oh, no!
No, we, we had to take, well, we were there, we were there the last couple of weeks. We were just in the back. Yeah, we got to get together. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I don't get that, um, for a reason. Do you have three full earwears to talk?
What's that?
Do you have the full earwears to talk?
No.
Not that they're like the council.
Is it hard to switch on?
Oh, it's our, they're in the cover.
Stainless steel for a long time. Till I found the ceramic and it's like, oh, ceramic, no matter what you do, just warm water comes right out.
Manager?
Yes, sir.
You spoiled us with this La Croix, Creeks, now the gun. Do we have to do a special appropriation to get some?
It's bottom of the budget, Rick.
Five dollars a Creeks, it costs you. Yeah.
Give me your gift.
It's a good idea. I'll go half with you, $2.50, $2.50.
I give up. I, I'd go for my.
Amy, don't think that my comments were, we're not going to be respectful. No, we want you.
I totally understand.
Yeah. I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Oh, yeah.
Eliminating one of our cans with the normal ones by using these Wi-Fi cans. Because they'll, they'll tell you when they need to be picked up.
That would be amazing.
Yeah, they're expensive, but, but. Yeah, same with the people. I know, today I got to go pick up these six cans.
Well, I don't know, for me.
Yeah, my recycling. Yeah, so everybody give more feedback on that and bring that back as well. Totally, yeah, totally.
Hyperanth or something.
Do a little triage. Yeah, yeah, that's totally fine. Uh, no, I can do that for you. Yeah, Sam would have to do. But you, you know, we can do that. Let's just do this. He must be going, of course.
I don't remember what I was going to ask you.
I'm going to do it. And you're going to have to go up.
You can go the right area.
He's ready to go. Yeah, he's ready. That's right. Scratch.
He's ready to go.
Are we, are we, are we closing it down in time?
What's that? Yes, we're going to do some triage here in just a moment. We're going to get started here in about one minute. If I get everybody to take their seats, please. Okay, our next agenda item is the agenda item four. This is our follow-up on closure of the Inglewood Ironworks Urban Renewal. We are looking for some staff direction tonight. Our community development director, Brad Powers, is present to discuss the continuation or dissolution of the Inglewood Industrial Urban Renewal Plan. Council, prior to getting into this, we are a little bit behind on our agenda this evening. The next two items are fairly critical for the wastewater strategy conversation. So I think, you know, we could potentially... Um, so I think, you know, we could potentially uh, reschedule this conversation for uh, Inglewood Ironworks Urban Renewal Area. Um, you know, I did discuss while we were at break about the potential of moving it to the end if we had time, but uh, unfortunately, that doesn't work. Um, so I just wanted to touch base and see what Council's pleasure, if we wanted to take on this issue now, uh, or if we wanted to try to punt this in the interest of time.
Well, it depends on the level of your discussion.
Yeah.
As we know, urban renewal is, is a topic, has a lot of interest on this group, and we wanna respect that, so. This is not entirely time-sensitive, so if you wanna have um, more opportunity to discuss it at further length at some other date, we can certainly come back.
Knowing that we need to do the next two, do you wanna punt, or do you wanna, yeah?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I did attend the meeting, and the, the committee is in agreement with going ahead and getting rid of this plan, so I think it's just important, after having the ribbon cutting over at General Iron, um, they would like to see the plan go away. It would make it easier for the metro district and for what Winslow wants to do, and the committee was unanimous in wanting to go ahead and dissolve the area, so I don't think that um, punting it helps anybody, and I think it's a pretty straightforward discussion.
You know, I think the only monkey wrench to that perhaps is that um, you know, the last users, of course Bryant Winslow, the Winslow family, uh, at our Mayor Manager Meeting, you know, we did reach out to Bryant to try to get some feedback, just make sure he's aware of this agenda item. Unfortunately, he didn't get back with me until after the agenda had already went out, uh, but in the conversation that I had with him, he said he was not aware, and that he wasn't sure if there was a benefit for him, and so he didn't have a position on this yet, and so I just uh, just thought that that might uh, throw a little bit of a monkey wrench into it, depending on what type of project he's coming forward and what type of increment.
No, I understand, but I had the conversation with him at the ribbon cutting, and he didn't, I mean, he seemed to be aware of it at the time that I talked to him and the people who are doing the foundry and have that metropolitan district. He made it very clear that he's talked to his attorney, and it would actually be better for them if it went away.
So no punt. Anybody else wanna weigh in on punt versus no punt?
And that they were unanimous at the meeting.
Yeah. Councilor Rosen.
I, I, maybe we should just talk about that.
Okay.
But I'm a little bit concerned because she's hearing one thing from the same person that you just talked to.
Yes, it sounds like.
Completely opposite.
Again, I, I talked to him post that ribbon cutting.
Just like today?
Um, Friday, I believe, or Thursday.
Well, that, that, I, I'm more worried about that than I, but I'm, I think this might be more straightforward, I don't know.
I was hoping that that conversation would, oh, yeah, I'm on board, go ahead, and I was just trying to check in.
Because the developer was really clear that he had discussed it with his attorney, so I think they all kinda got together, but if something's different, then.
Thank you, Councilor Rietz.
I think with that information there, that maybe we should postpone it for just a little bit. Uh, get the conversation with the Winslos and find out what it really is, since Brad said it's not absolutely urgent. We can review this information and then come back with the decision a little bit later, so his time isn't wasted here and.
And I think we do have time, uh, you know, the only potential for any different change in the situation would be January one, unless we got a project to come forward, but you know, in my mind, the only way that an increment could be generated is at January one, when the new evaluations uh, of that um, land are done. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Power?
There, correct. Just to remind you, we talked about this last year. There is no increment currently, because the amount of the base is under, or the amount of taxes is under the base that was set years ago, to the tune of just under four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so until that goes positive, we really have nothing to talk about in terms of funding potential anyway. There is the potential, given the redevelopment that's happening in the district now, that that may go positive in January, but we need to wait for the county's assessment of that um, at that time.
I'll suggest that staff get with the Winslos, and if they come to the consensus of getting on board with the lose, uh, with dissolution, it can come forward at a meeting. If not, and there's some discussion that needs to happen, then we should bring this back to study session here in a couple of months.
Mayor, I'd actually agree with that, because one of the things that we need to talk to them about, we haven't yet, because there is no project on the table, of what is and isn't eligible in urban renewal. This is not a free pot of money. It has to meet very stringent guidelines, and it has to be actually proven, that otherwise, without that type of funding, a project can't happen, and we may or may not be there with that property.
Thank you, and I think he just needs a little bit of understanding as well of what the tool is, and what um, you know, some potential impacts for potential uses. I think we could help him understand that and come to a position on that sooner rather than later, so we could uh, avoid additional administrative functions on this. Um, anybody else with any final questions or comments on this before I move on to our next item then? Thank you, everyone. Quick, uh, quick discussion. Uh, we kinda split the hair there. We, we had a short discussion. Let's move on to agenda item, this is agenda item six. This is the Inglewood Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant um, Strategy uh, Direction. Uh, this is informational. We have Chong Wu, um, the Engineering and Maintenance Division Manager, present to uh, share a biogas application feasibility study. Um, this is for information only prior to the joint session with Littleton City Council on August seventeenth, twenty seventeen. You're not Chong Wu.
We're gonna flip the two.
Uh, okay, so actually, this is uh, John Krosman.
Kuzman.
Kuzman, excuse me, uh, the director of our plant, uh, present to share an environmental scan of the factors most influencing the long-term success of the plant. This is for informational only, again, prior to that joint session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council. Uh, we wanted to get with you tonight. We have a uh, our biannual meeting with the Joint Councils coming up on August seventeenth, and there are a couple of pretty important topics that we wanna talk about at that meeting, and we wanted to seed those conversations tonight, give you a little bit of information. We're gonna do the same thing tomorrow night with the City of Littleton, uh, give them the same information. The idea that coming into that August seventeenth meeting with both councils, we can have very productive conversations and hopefully move the ball on a couple of these topics. Um, the main thing I wanted to present to you tonight is, when I came on board here uh, in this role, I was challenged by the Supervisory Committee to come back and provide an environmental scan, basically analysis of the factors that would be most influential in the overall success, uh, the overall sustain, sustained success of the Littleton Inglewood Wastewater Treatment Facility. And that environmental scan really focused on four major areas. First, aging infrastructure. Second, tightening regulations. Third, cost reduction slash revenue generation opportunities, and then finally, four, where, where do we fit within regional priorities, particularly around water? So the first topic is aging infrastructure. You see, this is a terrible graph. If you were uh, in marketing class, I'd get an F on this, because the uh, the, the scale on the left is really high, and the bars on the bottom are, are really low. This is done intentionally, because these slides are gonna build, and you're gonna, you're gonna see uh, the cost change as the slides come across. We had our fortieth anniversary celebration uh, earlier this year, uh, which is an incredible accomplishment, but the downside of that is our assets are aging, and it's gonna take a significant and continued investment in revitalizing those assets to protect the investment that both cities have made in this treatment facility. Some of those investments include uh, major process buildings, like the headworks and dewatering, a lot of our electrical infrastructure, particularly our switchgear, uh, and instrumenting, instrumentation and controls, and the environment that uh, our plant works in, those instruments and controls, they degrade very, very quickly. And then finally, you know, most assets in uh, in our industry are only scheduled to last fifty years, and so a lot of the basins, which were part of the original construction, the big tankage, when you go and see our facility, and a lot of those pipelines that you don't see under the ground, they're coming to the end of their useful life, and so what you see here is a sp, a burn rate or a spend rate over the next twenty years, on average, about ten million dollars a year, just to keep our asset base vital. So here you're starting to see the, the reason for the scaling. The other environmental factor that's really gonna be important to us is, we're, we're, we're going into a transition with regulations to protect a lot of the downstream uses. When we return that water back to the river, a lot of the uses downstream are really dictating what our treatment limits need to be, and there's two. First is Regulare, Regulation eighty-five, and that involves getting our nutrients down to a moderate level. So the regulators basically said, let's take uh, an initial step before we have to take the big step regarding nutrients, which is forecast here in Regulation thirty-one. The Regulation eighty-five, it's in our permit, it's in our draft permit right now. We should be getting that permit here uh, toward the end of fall uh, this year, and we're estimating about twenty million dollars to thirty-five million dollars in new infrastructure in order to achieve compliance with that. So that's not cheap, but it's reasonable compared to Regulation thirty-one, which the, the study that we, that was done in twenty thirteen is forecasting anywhere from two hundred million upwards to six hundred million dollars of brand-new infrastructure in order to achieve compliance there. Uh, the simple way to look at this is, we're forecasting building a water treatment level of facility on the back end of our wastewater treatment facility uh, going forward. That improvement is currently scheduled to go uh, into effect in twenty twenty-seven. The uncertainty associated with that is the final numeric limits, and if there's gonna be any sort of uh, compliance schedule with that. But what you see here is a really steeply increasing curve tied mostly to that second regulation, Regulation thirty-one. And if you overs, uh, um, if you overlay these on top of each other, the blue is the uh, capital reinvestment, the red is new capital, and then the green is the total of, of the two. We're looking at the end of um, at, at the end of this time period of spending upwards of over a hundred million dollars a year for multiple years. That's uh, uh, that's a significant burden to ratepayers, that's a significant burden to plant staff in trying to manage that type of capital intensity while still keeping the plant in uh, successful operations. I wanna make the point that we're not alone in this. Uh, so all of the point source discharges for municipal wastewater along this stretch of river are facing the same issues. Uh, the, the difference is uh, provided in this example is, I think we're a little bit behind in some of the capital investments, and particularly the asset reinvigoration piece uh, that, that, that's potentially needed here. You can see, what's shown here is the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District. They're our neighbors to, to the south. They run a, they have a two hundred and twenty million gallon plant compared to our fifty million gallon plant. You can see here uh, in years nineteen ninety-six through about two thousand and eight, uh, they, they, they very much mirrored our, our spend curve over the last few years, where it was a, a pretty equal combination of asset replacement and new capital uh, in there. What happened is, in the two thousand and eight, they started a pretty significant investment in both capacity and uh, improvements tied to nutrient removal. And what the goal there was to try to smooth out the overall rate impacts to their customers, and so there, you can see uh, it's, it, it represents two spending waves and a more constant wave, but the point is we're not alone, and we're potentially a little bit behind, particularly on the nutrients, and a little bit behind on the capital reinvestment. And so that's going to, you saw the shape of our curve relative to this. It's a very different situation than, than, than this facility as well. So, one of the things that we're really focusing on, and we're building our internal staff resources, is what can we do to minimize our cost, our cost footprint, uh, and what sort of partnerships can we, we um, develop in order to produce revenue going forward? So we have a very strong biosolids program right now. We're looking at potentially expanding that with new soil amendment products that are phosphorus-rich. Uh, those can potentially provide a source of revenue, uh, produce uh, an environmental benefit, and offset our costs going forward. We're looking at continuously doing uh, evaluations of technology, evaluating the risks associated with those, putting the business case together, uh, and making sure that uh, leveraging technology to the extent possible to try to minimize that uh, spend that may be required for Regulation thirty-one. We're also spending a lot of time uh, with, in, in advocating for regulations. The uh, the, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the Water Quality Division, is putting some new idea, frameworks forward where utilities that demonstrate early compliance, compliance ahead of their required regulatory timeframe, they can actually earn reward points, and those reward points actually tie to deferrals for Reg thirty-one. So if we essentially exceed our permit limits over the next few years, then that will lead to deferrals of Regulation thirty-one, and so time, time saved on implementing those types of regulations is dollars saved to our ratepayers, and so it's important that we continue to evaluate those, those advocacy, advocacy roles going forward.
Question, you say, when we exceed our limits now? Let's make sure I understand which limits you're talking about.
Sure. We're gonna have Reg eighty, Regulation eighty-five limits in our current permit. That, for example, that'll include a total phosphorus limit of one milligram per liter. If we discharge at a level of point seven milligrams per liter for an entire year, the way the framework is currently proposed, and our staff has been very instrumental in trying to drive this, this regulatory framework, that would, uh, that could potentially lead to a full year's worth of deferral on the Regulare, Regulation thirty-one improvements.
Okay.
Um, the, the thing we're gonna, the, another opportunity for us going forward is energy management. So not only are we reducing greenhouse gas emissions or overall energy footprint, but there's also revenue opportunities associated with that, and Chong Wu's gonna talk a little bit more about that later uh, this, uh, this evening. And then finally, we have a really robust pre-treatment program, which uh, gets us very connected to our regulated industries and our community that way. There's a lot of products that they're asked to remove from the wastewater, that if we bring them back into our treatment facility in a strategic location and with uh, the right processes, they actually produce energy, and they actually can produce revenue, which will help offset our cost. And then finally, if we start to look holistically at um, the Littleton Inglewood Wastewater Plant, where it sits uh, in this watershed, relative to some of the other wastewater plants where they sit in the watershed, we can really use the capacity that's in place to be capital to hopefully reduce our costs long-term. And the mechanism for that is effluent trading. Let's say, for instance, we uh, decide to, uh, we work out an agreement where we treat more uh, more capacity in exchange for uh, for monetary compensation. That could potentially mean a lower overall cost to the total community ratepayer system, if it saves improvement to downstream communities. That's, that's one other option, one other strategic partnership that this facility can conceivably explore going forward.
And can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is that trying to take on Sterling Ranch?
No, that, that's certainly one of the options, but there are certainly other options that are downstream of us as well. Redirecting flow that's being treated downstream of us to our location. One of, one of the advantages of that is it provides a more uh, steady flow through, through Denver, which protects uh, the um, the aquatic life through that region. Volume of flow is really important. The other thing is Denver Water is actively exploring, expanding their reuse system, and so where our plant is location, is located, uh, if we produce reuse quality water, which is forecasted as part of Regulation thirty-one, that water could be wheeled into Denver Water's distribution network more effectively from our location than some of the downwa, downstream locations, and so, and real estate, location, location, location. Our plant has very strong location for some of these regional um, concepts that are being explored right now.
No, I know Littleton already promised them for the ten years, but what if they do get the Roxborough plant back?
You're talking Sterling Ranch again?
That's a huge amount, I mean, forty thousand homes.
Yeah.
It's a huge. And how would that affect us if they did get, if they do do the Roxborough plant again?
This is exactly the kind, type of feedback we're looking for in this type of presentation. Is there a lot of options out there where if we look beyond our borders and we, we could explore and come back and be more prepared to answer those specific questions? I'm not really prepared to answer that, that specific question right now, but if, if that's something that this council and the Littleton Council are interested in, we could certainly come back with some scenario analyses and, and, and provide more information that way.
I would like to get some more information on the ten-year deal that I heard that they ended up making with this, to hook into our plant, and what that involves, and, and what their agreement was in trading off on Roxborough. If we could get some more information, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. I'd be happy to do that.
So on the reuse of the water with Denver, would we end up having to run a pipe further down the plat to dump into the river, or does it go straight to their water treatment plant?
There's a lot, there's a lot of detailed planning and scenario analysis associated with that, but in concept, um, what, what exists in, I can tell you what exists right now at the Metro Wastewater Reclamation Plant. The effluent that comes out of that plant is then distributed to Denver Water's re- The effluent that comes out of that plant is then distributed to Denver Water's reuse facility, which is proximate, is right next to it. Then Denver Water has the responsibility for treating that water and wielding it into their reuse network. I think a similar concept would make a lot of sense at our facility as well, where either we're treating to that level of standard and then it becomes Denver Water's responsibility or we've come to some agreement on the cost of that treating that water with Denver Water and then Denver Water ultimately wields that. We don't really have possession of the water rights that Denver Water, you know, the water that comes to us, it's not really ours. But, so ultimately it would be in Denver Water's responsibility to distribute that water. But there would be some analysis that would need to be done. Again, I just want to take a step back. These are concepts right now. I'm trying to share a broader perspective of the region beyond just our two cities and the 19 connector districts. So these are the types of concepts I'm looking for feedback on is what would you like us to evaluate more going forward, if any? Couple more regional perspectives. I just, just graphically, I kind of want to show where we fit in the broader watershed. We're going to focus in on that box and that's the current service area that we provide service for. And so within that, the principal service that I believe our customers attribute to us is it's the convenience of a flush, it's the ease of sending things down the drain, it's these water amenities that exist in our service area. And we provide that service to this map. This is that box that you saw on the bigger map ahead. The area at the top of the screen in blue is the city limits of Inglewood, the sort of peach area that's right in the center of that service area. That's the city of Littleton. And what you see around that is about 75% of the flow that that plant actually receives is in the 19 connector districts. And so when we talk about the convenience and the service we're providing, it's more than just Littleton and Inglewood. And it's this broader service area that we provide service to. And when you're talking about the potential rate implications associated with those spend curves that we talked about on those early slides, we as a staff are going to have to be very adept at communicating the business need and the rate implications to this broader, broader community. And as far as influencing the regulatory community, mobilizing the support of these 19 connector districts may be very strategic going forward as part of trying to influence the water quality regulations going forward. Okay, so this is that area with the service area shown. And as I said, location, location, we're very much upstream in this drainage basin. And this drainage basin has a lot of competing needs for the water that are associated. So you see recreation there, you see aquatic life habitat, you see agricultural, you see drinking water, and you see industrial uses. Those are all primarily downstream derivatives of the water that we produce. And those uses are what are driving our regulations. It's not the convenience of the flush that's driving regulations. It's these multiple competing water uses. And so as we're looking for managed, being fiscally responsible to Littleton and Inglewood and the 19 connector districts, it may require us to look downstream and what these water uses are and trying to find the right distribution of costs for the entire ratepayers of this served community by this water resource. So one of the mechanisms for doing that is the Metro Roundtable, which is part of the Colorado State Water Plan. That's the area shown in that orange boundary there. It's an interesting fact that about 80% of the state's population lives in this area influenced by the South Platte River, whereas 80% of the water is actually coming from the west slope and is moving through this basin through an intermountain transfer. So as you see, that metro basin is a subsection of the South Platte River Basin, which is one of nine river basins that is talked about in the state water plan. So states, the states recognizing that with population growth, with the intensity, with weather changes, and with just the trying to support our community's needs for water, it's really going to take a focus in all nine of these basins at a statewide level in order to produce the water solutions that really are most cost-effective for our ratepayers. I'd like to go through this a little bit more. And I don't know if I can, this is a little five-minute video that... I think there should be sound at this point.
That was the audio.
Maybe put a microphone by it.
Did you know that Colorado is one of the 10 fastest-growing states in the U.S.? As the population grows, so do our water needs. Colorado's water has many competing uses, including agricultural, industrial, recreational, environmental and ecosystem health, and municipal. Looking forward, our growing population, the many types of demands on our water supplies, and our highly variable weather mean we may have to make choices about the way we use our water and recommit to manage it better and smarter than ever before. As we grow, our water needs will exceed existing supply, creating a gap. State-sponsored research shows that the demand for water will exceed the supply before the year 2050. What's more, the basin's population is expected to grow by 2.5 million people, meaning that municipal and industrial water demand could double what it is today. So what's happening? There are eight major watersheds in the state. We call them basins. In 2005, the Colorado Legislature passed a law that created basin roundtables, which are groups of representatives who collaborate and discuss each basin's water issues and encourage locally-driven solutions to water supply challenges. Building off the work of the basin roundtables and with the new challenges facing Colorado, an executive order was issued in May 2013 calling for Colorado's water plan to address the gap and integrate a productive economy that supports vibrant and sustainable cities, viable and productive agriculture, and a robust skiing, recreation, and tourism industry. Efficient and effective water infrastructure promoting smart land use, and a strong environment that includes healthy watersheds, rivers and streams, and wildlife. Since that time, the basin roundtables have been developing basin implementation plans to guide the development of Colorado's water plan. A good Colorado plan needs a good South Platte plan. The basin is a key economic driver in the state. Seven of the top 10 agricultural-producing counties in Colorado are in the South Platte basin. Additionally, it is home to the Denver metropolitan area and other growing communities like Loveland, Greeley, and Fort Collins, which together account for over half of the state's economic activity. The basin's economy is also enhanced by environmental and recreational tourism, including skiing, boating, fishing, wildlife viewing, and hunting. The basin is also home to the state's most visited state parks and the eastern half of Rocky Mountain National Park. To meet existing water needs, South Platte Basin water managers rely on an extensive network of facilities and a vast system of privately-owned water rights. Longstanding efforts to conserve and reuse water in order to get the most benefit from available supplies has meant that by the time water flows out of our state, each drop has been used multiple times for different purposes. As the South Platte Basin's population and economy grow, we are approaching a threshold where we'll have to make trade-offs in how our water is used. And our ingenuity and inventiveness will be needed more than ever before. If we don't plan carefully, the important environmental, recreational, and agricultural water uses that characterize the basin may begin to disappear. Most striking, up to 50% of today's irrigated cropland in the basin could be dry before 2050. We need a plan that not only maintains healthy economies and communities, but finds ways to enhance environmental and recreational resources in many places. In short, we need to keep doing what we're already doing, but do it better while working to make our rivers and streams healthy. Trying to juggle our many needs for water can be hard. That's why we are developing the South Platte Basin Implementation Plan. We are identifying solutions to meet our many needs. Are there more ways to conserve and reuse our water? Can multipurpose water projects get built? Are there additional water supplies from outside the basin? When water is transferred to cities and industry, are there ways to minimize the effects on agricultural production and rural economies and maintain a farmer's property rights? Are there ways to maintain and enhance our environment and recreational resources while meeting all our competing water needs? Evaluation of new and expanded infrastructure and storage will be important for implementing all strategies. The draft plan considers a wide range of strategies that could be used in various combinations to meet the gap. Conservation and reuse, multipurpose water projects that include municipal, industrial, recreational, and environmental components, agricultural transfers including alternative transfer methods, Colorado River basin supplies, and storage. Throughout, we must work to maintain and improve our environmental and recreational resources that make the South Platte Basin a great place to live. So we need your input. Read the plan and learn how we can meet our water needs, then help us by offering your input. How should we meet our growing water demands? What's most important to you? To learn more and provide input, check out southplattbasin.com. To take our survey, click here. And to see what other parts of the state are doing, please visit coloradewaterplan.com.
Okay, we'll open up for council questions or comments on this portion?
I have one more.
Yep, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Can you advance the slide or exit? So we're facing some real challenges, you know, locally with our infrastructure. But the region is also facing issues. Other wastewater facilities are facing issues. Denver Water is facing issues. And so when I, as part of this environmental scan, and what I want to share with you is I think the challenges also present opportunities. And what, if you can go to the 69 there... And part of that is how we define the fiscal responsibility. Is it fiscal responsibility within the boundaries of Littleton-Inglewood and the 19 connector districts? Is it fiscal responsibility for a greater, greater area? Go ahead and go up.
Back to you.
Right there. And to me, it really, the question is, there's opportunity for potentially strategic partnerships and really leveraging innovation to reduce our costs, not only for our community, but the broader community that's served by the water we produce. And to me, I think this is an opportunity for Littleton-Inglewood. Location, location, where we sit in this watershed, the resource that both cities have already invested in at this plant location, we can be a very distinctive player on statewide issues here. And by getting out in front of these issues now, starting to formulate these partnerships now, gives us an opportunity to not only save our ratepayers, but also to affect the state's water issues for a long time. So we're looking at, I'm open to feedback today. I'm open to your thoughts today. But we're, again, this was to seed discussion. There's multiple pathways that we could potentially go down and explore on your behalf. And we'd be looking for more feedback August 17th at the joint council meeting.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council now, Councilmember Berdine?
It doesn't do us too much good if we do a conservation plan and water plan, understanding how much the plat can provide and what it can take and what the 100% of it being used is when everybody agrees and says this is as much as we can do. And then we have something like Douglas County, just ignore it. Not require a 40,000 homes project to go ahead and make a plan for their 100-year water plan and that we're going ahead and then giving our infrastructure to kind of help that happen when they can't show that it's sustainable. So then it becomes everybody else's responsibility to use a lot less to make that happen, to force that round peg into that square hole. And so I'm not sure how well we're, how useful it is to make plans if somebody, if Douglas County Commissioners can just go ahead and bypass it and say, "No, we want it, so we're going to make that happen." I mean, I respected what Littleton did in not making, you know, not using Denver Water, redoing their contract with them, but it's going to end up going through. And then we're helping it by, you know, letting them connect into the sewer when, I mean, how good are our plans and our conservation if the entire idea is to overuse the arid land that we already have that we know can't sustain that unless everybody is forced to use so much less that we put a burden on that, on that lifestyle, on the culture that's here? So I don't know how we combat that.
You can do your, we can do our part. And the idea of this presentation and the discussion is what are, what is the portfolio of ideas that we can put forward and the different pathways to tackle this challenge that is in front of us, a funding challenge, an environmental challenge? And yes, there may be parties in the broader community that tend to be smaller, but we can have an impact with the choices we make and some of the partnerships that we could form. And it gives us different off-ramps should different, different regional players take different choices. Having different, having different portfolio of options would give us countermeasure plans when those things occur.
Well, I would like it to be added to the August discussion on how we contribute to that. That if Douglas County is going to go ahead and make a decision that doesn't keep in with the agreement of doing a 100-year plan and making sure that that's sustainable, that we're not contributing into that and helping them break that trust because we want them to use our sewer plant. And if they do come in and use our sewer plant, that it comes at a cost to them that eliminates some of the burden on our own community for them coming in and getting our services, that they pay higher to help pay for the infrastructure that this community has been burdened with to pay. It's available to them, and if it weren't for that, they wouldn't be able to do their construction. It wouldn't be a possibility. So that we're recapturing some of that, I mean, if we're going to do it. And we need to have the discussion about whether we do do it. I would like to know how Littleton made an agreement like that with them to be able to do that 10-year plan, because I don't believe it came to this council. So I would just want to know how the process worked and in the bigger scheme, that if we're going to have these regional plans, that we're all agreeing that we're not going to let somebody violate it. If they do, we don't help them violate it. And if we are going to, then they have to pay the cost for that because they can't come in into the system this late in the game and use what we built at the cost that we have now, because we've, we put a lot of money and effort into this. I mean, we paid for this. So, and also if you would touch on the permitting and whether the permitting is being done at the 55 million gallons per day still, or whether it's at the 24, which we really are doing, and how that whole process is coming out, at least make sure that happens in August as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, I believe, and then Yates.
I would like to just add on to that saying, I think it's an issue of accountability. And so if we can be more clear about how we articulate the accountability or what the statewide initiatives around these watersheds and regional roundtables, where is the accountability to play together rather than separately and counter-productively with one another? So that would be helpful if that could be outlined a little bit further. The other thing is that, yes, I would love to see our portfolio considered. And what are the smartest options in that? I think we have to be very proactive and thinking ahead. So I'm all in favor of us continuing to explore some of the things you're suggesting here.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
With all of the additional requirements on our water and the way the state's going and some of the concerns that have been brought up on usage of water, I went to the CML discussion on water usage. Yeah, it's really important that we do make a plan, because if we don't make a plan, we're planning to fail. And the only way we're going to make this... And the only way we're going to make this work is by working with other players around us. We have a great asset, we, we are not using its, its, we're not using that asset to its fullest, and I, I think that we should take advantage of that, because we've got some substantial costs in the future in order to just keep up with what we're supposed to keep up with. So if we can spread that cost out among a larger base, I think that's a, a very wise thing to do. And I'm very much in favor of trying to find ways, new ways of using our product, or in our cases, some of, some of the materials that comes from that plant. I think you're going on the right track. So, and, and the comment about accountability is very important, and I think the only way we're going to get accountability is, is we start to work with other, other players that we start getting some force behind it, because it's not just us trying to defend our rights.
Director Kuzman, anything else from you? Do you feel like you've got some enough direction in, in preparation for the August meeting?
Yep, I appreciate all the feedback, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to bring on Chong Wu, again, this was Agenda Item 6A, this is Chong Wu, Engineering and Maintenance Division Manager, present to share the biogas application feasibility study for the plant. This is informational only prior to our joint study session. Welcome, Mr. Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, City Council. Try to get to, sorry. Okay. Also, this evening, I want to provide an update regarding the status of our biogas utilization project. So as you know, earlier this year, we initiated a project to look at the feasibility of utilizing our biogas as a renewable energy source. Okay. We developed some specific goals for our project. First, we wanted to develop a renewable energy product. We actually wanted to promote renewable energy within our communities and then provide environmental benefits. Second, we wanted to create a revenue source for the cities to potentially offset the burdens to our ratepayers. Third, we wanted to highlight our facility as a community resource, to show the value of a wastewater treatment plant, that we are a resource recovery facility. And then lastly, we wanted to evaluate the opportunities to partner with an outside agency, because we're not necessarily in the business of power generation or, or the gas industry, we wanted to leverage their expertise in order to help us moving forward. So to speak to our potential, currently, we produce on average about 470,000 cubic feet per day of digested gas, so that roughly equates to just over 2,000 gallons of gasoline produced per day. So if we're to project that out to the next 20 years, assuming a nominal 1% annual increase, we would produce roughly 2,500 gallons of gasoline per day. So we definitely believe that we have a viable energy product. So we looked at several opportunities for renewable fuels, the first being using our digested gas for onsite electrical generation, the second was converting our digested gas for use as compressed, or as compressed natural gas for vehicle fuel, and then third, we looked at converting our digested gas to pipeline quality and then re-injecting or injecting that into a utility service line. So in terms of our analysis, we actually eliminated cogeneration pretty early in the evaluation process. The, the amount of, the, the cost associated with main, operating and maintaining those engine generators is quite high, and also compared to CNG and pipeline, a pipeline project, the actual revenues generated from cogeneration does not compare to those other two opportunities. So for compressed natural gas, this is actually a very favorable project. We actually identified a potential customer within Waste Management, located just off of Santa Fe and Union there. However, this, this project has a higher initial capital cost, mainly due to constructing, construction of a pipeline from our facility to that, the Waste Management Facility, and also the costs associated with building a CNG fueling station. So we actually eliminated that, and then the pipeline project actually proved to be the most viable for our facility. It has a quicker payback period, a lower capital cost, a quicker payback period, and based on the, the revenue generation, based on the revenue, revenue generation from the federal programs that are available. So our recommendation is to do a pipeline project and inject it into a utility service line. We actually have an opportunity here to partner with Excel Energy. They actually have a gas line located adjacent to our north property boundary, so this would actually make the construction much more simple, lower risks involved. This is a lower capital cost and therefore a lower payback period, and I wanted to say one other thing, but I just lost my train of thought. Oh, go on. So we actually researched several facilities. This is a relatively new technology, but it has been developed. We have, there are two installations within the United States that are actually doing this, a pipeline injection project, and there are three along, coming shortly along the way, two later this year, and then one coming up in North Carolina later in 2018. So while this is relatively a new, cutting-edge technology, we do believe that it poses a low risk to the cities, it has a high potential for revenue generation for, for our, for our, both our cities. So in terms of the revenue source, the revenue source is the Renewable Fuel Standard Program. This was enacted by the Energy Policy Act of 2005, and it's actually administered by the Environmental Protection Agency. So this program is a national policy created to reduce our country's reliance on non-renewable fuels, such as heating oils and, and jet fuel. So it's designed to offset the fossil fuel use and decrease greenhouse gas emissions. So the program requires oil and gas producers to, to purchase specified amounts of renewable fuels. So for each BTU of fuel that's used for vehicle fuel, that equates to a renewable credit, and these renewable credits are called renewable identification numbers, or RINs, and these RINs are what has the, the value. So these RINs are actually traded on the open market, and their prices fluctuate with, with the oil prices, so as oil prices increase, so does the RIN values. So these oil producers actually purchase these RINs from producers such as ourselves, and that's what shows they're compliant with the Renewable Fuel Standard Program. So the EPA has mandated certain quantities of renewable fuels to be purchased year by year. So in this chart, we actually show that, I kind of skipped over something earlier, I'm going to go back here. So in terms of the renewable fuels, there's actually four categories of renewable fuels. The cellulose biofuel, which is kind of highlighted in bold there, that's designated for wastewater treatment plants. So those are the fuels that's generated from products such as wood, algae, and plant-like products. So that's the category that belongs to wastewater treatment plants. So going to this chart here, the cellulose chart is denoted as D3, which is the darker blue bar graphs. So that started in 2013, and as you can see, as it goes through the year 2022, the mandates for that cellulose fuel increases, increases dramatically, actually. So beyond the year 2022, EPA has not yet established those mandates. However, we do believe that there is growing support, or there is support for the EPA to continue with that program going forward. So this chart shows the current, or the, the prices of the RINs over the last three years. So as you can see, from 2015, 16, and 2017, the values of RIN, of the RINs have steadily increased. So the current value of the RIN is about $2.50 per RIN, so over the last three years, that averages about, to be about 178 per RIN. So if you go back to this chart, going to year 2022, the darker blue, as far as the, the amount of, of, of the fuel increases. So it is our, it is our belief that as we go forward through the years, that the RIN values will steadily continue to increase as the mandates for those renewable fuels also increase. So this is a quick chart of the project costs. So the initial capital costs, we're estimating about 7.8 million, and if you're looking at the second line there, the RIN revenue yearly is about 2.3 million. So the, the revenue is actually driven by the RINs, and so we are, and that's based on the current $2.50 per RIN. So you can see that we were very motivated to pursue this project, the cost associated with the revenues is very, very attractive for us. So we did a two-part sensitivity analysis of our project, and the first being based on the RIN fluctuation or the value fluctuation of the RINs. So if you look at the blue line, that currently shows the $2.50 per RIN, and it shows that we would receive, we would have a payback of our investment within four years. If we only assumed the average price for the last three years of $1.78, we would receive a payback within six years, which is still a very attractive project. The green line shows the current $1.78 per RIN, and it shows that after year four, the, our price, our, we would not receive the, the payback period. That assumes that, a worst-case scenario, that after year 2022, the Renewable Fuel Standard Program is not renewed, and the only way that would happen is, is my understanding is that it would have to be repealed by legislation. So while we believe that it won't happen, if it were to happen, we do have some viable exit strategies, and which I will get to at a later slide. So the second sensitivity analysis was based on financing options. So here, we looked at several options, the city self-funding this project, going out to the bond market, or actually looking at third-party financing. So the takeaway here is that, over the long haul, the 20-year period, financing does not have an overall impact to the revenues for this project. So the city has a couple of options here, the blue line being that this is self-funded. Obviously, it's very attractive, because we could recoup all of our investment within four years. However, if the cities so chose to keep their capital reserves for any future projects or any other needs, financing would not have an overall impact to this project. So the timing of this project and the marketing of the RINs is, is very critical to us. This project supports our triple bottom line, it's, it's a low-risk project. If the RIN program, the RIN program beyond '22 is, is uncertain, however, we do believe that it will continue. Renewable fuels have support for energy independence and less reliance on imported petroleum. Also, the ag industry also relies heavily on these RINs for their production of ethanol. So in terms of, if it were to not be renewed after year 2022, we do have a couple of exit strategies in place. We could return to cogeneration and then use that energy to offset our, our plant electricity costs within the plant site. We could also convert, go to convert to CNG fueling, and then sell the CNG to either Waste Management or other customers that we see out there. Both of those options would require some additional capital, about, we're estimating about $2 to $3 million, but again, we believe that we could recoup those costs with either of those two exit strategy options. So I mean, we believe that this is a, a, a safe investment, it is a, a good investment for the cities to move forward. So in terms of the implementation schedule, we're looking at presenting this again at the August joint council study session. At that time, we will have the final contract for the design engineer to move forward, and then bring it to Inglewood City Council for your approval in September. We have quite a few things to take care of at a short period of time, but we're actually looking to begin construction in early 2018, with completion at the end of 2018, and then by 2019, we will start to receive the, the revenues from those RIN credits. So in terms of current project status, we have begun the negotiations or discussions with Excel Energy on the interconnection agreement. We've developed a request for proposal to develop renewable fuel credit management services. This is actually a broker services. To, to sell RINs, you actually have to be certified by the EPA, and then this broker would actually help us to get certified, administer the requirements to, to have us be certified, and also act on our behalf to actually sell the RIN credits to the oil producers, such as BP or Exxon. We're currently reviewing financing options with both the Cities of Inglewood and Littleton, and then we're working on the final scope of service with our design engineer, which is Corolo Engineers. So lastly, this project does support our initiative of energy independence and being a resource recovery facility, however, or in addition, it is in alignment with both the City of Inglewood and City of Littleton goals, specifically of assuring fiscal responsibility, providing a sustainable natural environment, and also maintaining a reliable public infrastructure. So thank you, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for your work on this. I'm really, really, really excited about the opportunity here. I think it, it makes a lot of sense, and a four-year payback seems like a very short period of time. My question is, as it relates to the, kind of you said, the broker to help manage the RINs, are we going to have someone, like, are we just going to kind of outsource that? Or are we going to, are they going to more teach us how to do that, or how, how do you think that would work?
I think, I think it'd be a combination of both. So the, the request for proposal should be coming out within the next week or two, and then we will see what we get in terms of the responses that we get. But we're also hiring a design engineer to kind of help us navigate through some of the, the requirements needed to get with the interconnection agreement with Excel Energy and all the other players that are involved in this process.
Okay. I'm really excited about this and can't wait to see where it takes us. Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you. Councilmember Berdine?
When this originally came forward, I thought it was 4.7 million.
I'm not sure where that number came from, but we can research that.
The only number that you had on here was, the middle choice was 8.7 million, and then you said this one that you did choose, I heard you say it was 7 point something?
Yeah, the 7.8 million is for the pipeline injection project. The CNG facility was estimated at $8.7 million.
And that would be that if, that would allow us, however, to, if the RINs went down to a, below that level, or went away, then we would still be able to at least get it to the quality of a natural gas and sell it or use it. I mean, this isn't for, I mean, I appreciate the concept of independence, but it isn't independence, we're just marketing this, we're selling a product. It isn't for us to be energy independent here, it's just that we would be selling off that product. Well, not that product, we'd be selling off the subsidies that the oil companies give in order to do this. It's just subsidized by the gas and oil companies, so I'm not, I'm not sure how much it's helping that piece. But in order to kind of pay this project back, I'm, I'm concerned that if we didn't do that piece, and it does change, because you want this to at least last, what, 20 years?
Right. So in, in terms of why we're pursuing this project now, and why it's so attractive to move forward now, is that the RINs are guaranteed through the year 2022. So that is within our four-year payback window for this project.
Or six. I mean, you did several scenarios on there. The four years is not a guarantee, and how many years does it take? You said it wouldn't be even up until 2019?
2019 would be the first year.
Okay. And then the no-payback exit strategy, in order to use anything, would be another capital investment of another $2 to $3 million.
Right.
Otherwise, it's not doable at that point.
Right, but if, even if you look at that scenario, we don't recoup all of our, all of our own capital investment, but we recruit the majority of it. And yes, you are right, we would have to invest in another, an additional $2 to $3 million to go to CNG or go to cogeneration, but with that, the, the most of the infrastructure would already be in place, and so it would be a small, I say small, but $2 to $3 million to generate some additional revenue to pay back that project.
But, and, and that's why I was a little confused, because you have that original, originally here is $8.7 million if we do it now, and...
That, that's for CNG, not, not for pipeline. It's two different projects.
No, I know. But CNG would be necessary if we did the no-payback use-exit strategy. The CNG now is $8.7 million, and this one would be $7.8 million. So it's not a $2 to $3 million difference.
Well, the, the only difference would be that the, the gas conditioning equipment and the treatment facility that is needed for the pipeline would already be in place for the CNG. We would have to just build a storage facility, a storage mechanism to, to house that CNG, and then we would have to find a customer. For example, if we went to Waste Management, we'd have to build a pipeline from our facility to Waste Management.
Or if we did for our facility, like, or if we did something like that. Or if we used it for our facility, like, or we did something like that. So, if that's a possibility, wouldn't we be better off just spending that a little, that, it's not even a whole million dollars, $900,000. Wouldn't we be better spending that now and not, and having that option since we're looking at a 20-year span?
That's, that's definitely a consideration. The only reason why we're choosing the, the pipeline quality is that the RINs are guaranteed, at least guaranteed through the year 2022.
2022 isn't 20 years. That's only, I'm not trying, I'm not arguing.
Let them finish the answer here.
I'm not arguing with you about the use of that, or the guaranteed of the RINs. But if we're going to use it through the lifetime of that, I just want to know the difference between saying that it would be $2 to $3 million more, but if we did it now, it would only be $900,000. And is that worth having a discussion about? And I don't know why the difference.
I don't understand a $900,000. If we did CNG, it would cost $8.7 million.
Right. And you're saying this one, if we did, is 7.8 million. But if it doesn't work out, and we need to do the exit strategy, then we bring it up to Level 2 status, that's going to cost us $2 to $3 million. But if we do it now, it's only costing us another $900,000. That's what, I'm just, was curious. Okay. Never mind.
That's without the pipeline, correct?
I guess I don't understand the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's just an evaluation of option one versus number three, and showing that perhaps the unknown with option three might lead us back to option number one because of its long-term sustainability and knowing that we would have at least something out of it that would have some value. Please.
There's three costs, in the $8.7 million, there's three cost components. One would be storage, one would be gas conditioning, and one would be a pipeline. Okay. So, if we go with the option of pipeline injection, we're already paying for the gas conditioning. So, that's the bulk of the cost. And that's why, if the subsequent exit strategy cost, all you're paying for would be the storage and potentially a pipeline, depending where your distribution outlet is. That pipeline goes away if we directly sell the CNG. The pipeline would add to the cost if we were going to somewhere like Waste Management. That's the difference between the 8.7 and the $2 to $3 million that John was talking about. Does that make sense, or?
Because what you presented here is that the number two would be the whole thing that would include what you would need for your exit strategy. And I'm still not getting that there's the $2 to $3 million or $900,000.
It doesn't, the, the $7.8 million does not include in funding for the exit strategy. That would be a subsequent appropriation at the time that would allow us to assess the market conditions at that time, what the different rates are. It's not, we're not saying fund the base investment and the exit strategy now. We're saying.
Oh, no, I realize that. But when, when you go, the exit strategy would bring it, be bringing it to the CNG level? And if we brought it to CNG level now, we wouldn't have to worry about that exit strategy piece. We'd already have it.
It's, it's interesting. The gas conditioning system for pipeline injection is actually cleaning the gas to a higher standard than the, than the CNG level. So, you're, we're, by making the investment in pipeline injection, we're treating the gas to the highest standard that we can, and it gives us ultimate flexibility in off-ramps.
Otherwise, we're limited to one.
That's correct.
Anything else? Councilmember Berentone?
Sorry. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Yates?
Okay. I think I followed this conversation here that you guys just had. The key thing, though, is we're going to go for the, the RINs. That's, that's the goal. If RINs all of a sudden take a dump, they're no longer there, then we need to do something else.
Correct.
But it, it wouldn't be wise to spend a million, almost a million dollars right now on something that we're not anticipating will be an issue. Or I should say, not anticipating, but the risk of having that issue is relatively low.
Right.
So, that's why we've got the 7.8 versus 7.8 plus, the ability to clean it up some more.
Payback period is substantially shorter.
Yeah. Right, right, right. I like this. The return on this, I think, is a really good return on the amount of time that we, we have money out there and we're paying it back. And then, once it's paid back, it's, it's a great return to the city. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I just would like to remind us that RINs are in the futures market. And the reason that it is so high of a return is because it is a very volatile market also. And the current administration could do away with it even before 2022. And so, if we put out this money, it's probably a good thing. We do have some exit strategy because we'll lose all of it if RINs go away. And that is a possibility.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone, back to you.
I realize 2022 sounds like way in the future. It's four years from now. That barely takes us past the payback at the shorter end of the spectrum. So, that's why I'm interested in if we're going to do this and make it along, and try to use it at least through the life of the equipment, that we make sure that we do the whole thing cheaper than it is now, or we're going to have something that potentially, if the commodities market goes away in four years at 2022, if that's all we're guaranteed, then all we have accomplished is paying back the infrastructure. And that's, I'm looking more toward the six-year period, because that's what we had heard before was that it'd be about six years. But even if it's within that period, we've barely paid it back on, on that guarantee, and we've not made any money. And then we've put out $7, $8 million, and I don't know whatever the cost is for this. And then we don't have something that's usable. If we at least, I could at least go along with that we're trying to be green, or, or use this gas that's being flared up now, okay, and at least sell it. I don't know what the gas prices will be at that point, but at least, it's my understanding we can at least give it to, get it to a level where it's, it's at least marketable on the level of natural gas. Then wouldn't it be better for us to just go ahead and make sure that we have that infrastructure in place to make this more of a 20-year investment, instead of a possibly only four-year investment? So, I just want to have some more information so that we can cover those, cover those bases. Because 2022 done get us anywhere except maybe to have paid off our investment, maybe.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I, I like this plan. I like where it's going. I never thought I'd be thinking or talking about RINs. That's really exciting in my mind. One of the things that might help, I mean, you have down here under the time to market is critical, that slide, that there's low risk. And perhaps what we need to do is, is really flesh out what is the risk, and what are the factors that could make that low risk become medium to high? And, and that it might answer some of the questions that Councilmember Berentone or others might ask about this. Did we, do we go in this really understanding what the risk is? But I also wanted to ask you a question about what is the process for being certified for RIN credits?
You know that, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Okay. Curious, I have no idea. I do like the triple bottom line way of thinking here and how we're, we're trying to think through what, what our assets are here in a way that's helpful. I'd certainly rather not flare things off and do something productive with it in the long run. It's better for us overall. But you're right, you know, it doesn't totally get us out of energy or fossil fuel dependency totally. It won't. But if everybody does a piece of this, it could help a lot. So, thanks for the work on this. I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. You, Mayor Protem?
I'm excited for this to move forward, and it is speculation, kind of, because we don't know. But you're, I want to make sure I heard what you said, that you're saying it's guaranteed to 2022?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Which gives me a little better feeling that at least you're saying it's guaranteed till then, and we can just keep our fingers crossed. But should it, we have to do the exit, then we can. We have another idea, and we have a product ready to go pretty quick.
Yes.
So, I'd like to move it forward and move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments here as well, and then try to wrap up this conversation. You know, I'm generally supportive of this idea. I think it makes a ton of sense, you know, from an environmentally, environmental sustainability sort of standpoint, moving on it now makes a ton of sense, because we are just sort of flaring this off. And it does produce, gives us to a point where we do have a usable product. Even if that worst-case scenario comes, comes down the pike, I think part of the conversation that we're missing is, we're not just in the lurch, now we've got a sellable product. And, you know, what, what, what the staff didn't do was produce a new break-even analysis of that $2 to $3 million capital cost in that, in that worst-case scenario, where we would have a product that we would be able to bring to market. And so, again, I don't see a ton of downside. I do think, you know, Councilmember Berentone brings up an interesting choice of, you know, looking at the natural gas option, sort of option number two. And, you know, in my mind, though, that requires some sort of subjective opinion about the future of the federal policy on this issue. And I'm just not so sure that, you know, any of us are in a great position to make that determination. And I know that, you know, since, you know, with our financial runs, that we can make our break-even point, you know, I'm not too scared of even that worst-case scenario, knowing that we'll have a product to offset some of those capital costs. Councilmember Olson?
Just wanted to clarify something that you're saying. So, but it's not just one product, it's several possibilities. That's why this other option is a little better, because it's not just.
You mean the, the off-ramp?
Yeah.
Yeah. The off-ramp is going to CNG or onsite cogeneration.
And then the other question I had is, and I hadn't thought of this until just now, again, the, under the time to market is critical, the, the way it's set up right now till 2022 is it's supposed to go on indefinitely beyond that? That's the way the language is set up?
It is.
It takes a particular motion to stop it. It's not as if it's going to be renewed and have to be voted on that point. But someone could, in the, in the federal government, decide to. So, it's, it feels just a little bit more in the favor of this continuing, which is also feels a little better to me, because there's so many things going on. But, but nobody can predict that either.
Right. We've had, we've had discussions with the oil producers such as BP and some of the other, some of the other brokerage firms. And, you know, maybe they're just feeding us a bunch of, you know, whatever. But they're confident that the EPA will continue this program beyond 2022.
Kind of fits them in the long run, which is great.
Yeah. Thank you. Any final questions or comments to wrap this up? Councilmember Berentone?
We're not looking for any kind of consensus. This is just for, so we're not looking to have people agree with it or not agree with it. We're still just having the discussion until the joint meeting.
Agreed.
Thanks.
Any other final comments or questions? Seeing none, a thank you, Mr. Ru, for being here tonight. I'll move us on to councilmember's choice. Would anybody like to kick us off on member choice this evening? Mayor Protem, thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
Nothing.
Councilmember Berentone? Councilmember Russell?
Nothing.
Councilmember Olson?
Nothing.
Wow. Okay. Back to mayor's choice, I do have just a couple of brief items here.
Killing that one. Your honor.
Oh, no, I got something now.
Take a cue. I suppose I have a few things to say now.
Do you?
The Guild was wonderful.
Yeah, just wanted to throw out, thank you, everybody who showed up to the Guild grand opening. I think that was a wonderful event. You know, I told you, you know, I spoke with the South Metro Realtor Association, that was a great event. You know, great regional partners with a lot of our local mayors, you know, Littleton, Sheridan, Lone Tree, Centennial, Greenwood Village, we're all present. We gave each about a 10- to 15-minute presentation. Obviously, I spoke a lot about our Broadway Improvement Project, and that got some interest. Hopefully, we can get some additional funding there. Did want to highlight something this week. What was that? Oh, Final Friday, this Friday, as well as the unfortunate news of our former mayor, Tom Burns, passing. You know, unfortunately, we did send out an email regarding that. His memorial service will be at St. Louis Church this Friday at 10:00 a.m. So, anybody who can attend, please do. Tom was instrumental in delivering our Southwest Corridor line here. He's told me many times about how he lobbied, you know, through the halls of Congress to sell an idea of light rail in the metro area, which ultimately led to our Southwest line, the development of this site, which was one of the first transit-oriented development sites in the United States, as well as, of course, the major investment in the rest of the line throughout the metro area. So, Mr. Burns will be missed, but his contributions to our city we'll live on. Any city manager's choice?
All I was going to say is that we will be sending flowers on behalf of the city for that particular memorial service. That's all I had.
You, city attorney's choice?
No report this evening.
Thank you, and we're hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.